... This is Mr. Pastor, Pastor Dan Campbell from Calhoun, Virginia, and he's coming to lead us in prayer. Pastor Matt.
Let's pray. Our most gracious and glorious Father in heaven, may your name be hallowed and honored in all the earth. To you, oh Lord, who made the nations for your glory, to serve you in freedom and in peace, give to the people of our country and our county a zeal for justice and the strength of forbearance that our liberty and our plenty, in accordance with your gracious will, would be used for your glory. And Lord, we ask that you would grant a spirit of wisdom for those whom, in thy name, we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace, and that through obedience to your purpose, we may show forth your praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, oh Lord, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in you to fail. And to our great King and Governor, whose glory is in all the world, grant to each of our commissioners, our career administrators, our county staff, and other elected representatives, wisdom and strength to know and to do your will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness, and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve the people of this county in your fear. Give them courage to exercise their duties with honor and integrity, so that with charity of spirit and with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully and impartially serve in their offices to promote the well-being of the people of this community. And finally, we do pray that you would mercifully grant that all the peoples of the earth, divided and enslaved by sin, that they may be freed and brought together under Christ's most gracious rule, he who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God now and forever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you, Pastor Matt, we're going to lead up in prayer. I just called my cell phone, this person has been here one time, but I think that that's it. Sign up and come anytime, good luck on this thing.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everybody else here this evening for our first meeting of April twenty nineteen. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, be seated and sat by the chair. If you want to talk about something that's not yet attended, well then, I don't know, but certainly when you will have an opportunity to come forward and speak. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April the sixteenth at nine a.m., so feel free to come back and be with us. Number three, approval of the attendance. Right now, I have one that we need to add to the consent item. It is an invoice submitted by John Dear Financial in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and twenty seven cents, the partial payment of two new twenty eighteen John Dear motivated for the Public Works Department. So that will go under consent. Are there any more changes, additions, additions, anything else?
No additions here.
Okay. If it's not, then if there are motions, a vote given.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner, removing any further discussions. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. This public hearing, number four, the board to repeat bids for roadside lot waitlots set for this date at six p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible. We have a tab sheet under this. We've got two bids, one from Nancy Weeks from Homosus Springs in pursuit of lawn work in theory. Okay, the first one's Nancy Weeks Incorporated, and the bid price per acre for all work was eighty-four dollars. Okay, the next one is Carrie Kewl Lawn Works. The bid price per acre for all work is seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents an acre.
Seventeen?
Seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents. This is committee of the morning. The big committee is Hank Evans, Scott Nigh, and Dana Grimes. Well, committee, don't break that up, a recommendation home to April the sixteenth and a conference. Okay, very good, Dana. We'll go to number five, the board to hold a public hearing set for this date at six p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible, on the passage of the proposed law of spring and economic development as a long tax extension with super plus next USA Inc. Is there a motion to lead the unit, so, hold on.
I'm with you. I can answer.
So a motion by Commissioner Depp, second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries, Mr. Bishop.
Ma'am, in order to grant a big economic development as a long tax extension to super plus next USA Inc. Corporation of State of Florida, best find honest incentives providing an expiration date for extensions, finding that the bid is weak, the requirement for Florida statute one ninety-six point zero one two provides for proof of eligibility for extensions, providing a requirement for the annual report, providing the severability, and providing effective date.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will welcome the floor for anyone from the public who wishes to speak about this, Adam, number five. Nobody? Okay. Do you comment on the board? If not, is there a motion, Pastor, on this?
Motion by a board.
There's a motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion? It's the board's call. Okay, make comments. Commissioner Page?
Hi.
Commissioner Depp?
Yes.
Commissioner Page, yes. The passage by you, no, I'm putting it forward. Yeah, thank you.
How many, how many, uh, slides do I have?
No, it's okay.
Okay. This information is, uh, uh, I need one, two, three, four. One, the board's carried out down, um, for years, he put two years, one twenty million for capital investment. The next one is like five years, and then the total revenue is, at the very bottom, is nine eight seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-five ounces of the, 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 the.
Is that all okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm, I might say it, I'm, uh, once again, above what you may, if they don't follow through with their plans to do what they said they're gonna do, they will be taxed, just like the wood. They didn't get to them. Only, uh, to understand that, we're not gonna let them just high five people get away with it. They say they're gonna wear twenty or thirty or forty, you know, they ask them up my foot pretty quick. It's just not more than that. I just don't know that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll go to Adam, number six, the board to repeat bids for the sale of parcels for property acquired by the county from tax deed sales, which is executed to the county through the tax deed process, set for this date at six p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible. We have to tie off this sale, please, in parcel, and I have a copy, and I have a bid on three parcels, so. On the first, um, parcel, which was R O one seven five four dash two twenty, I have a bid from Aaron Anderson from Arkansas. And his bid, um, the first one that's on your list is twenty-five hundred dollars. And I also have a bid from Aaron Anderson, um, um, parcel R zero one seven five four dash two five five. That bid is twenty-five hundred dollars. And then I have, um, here, um... From Daniel Castle, um, parcel number R zero one seven five four dash two twenty. Uh, that bid is two thousand one sixty-five. And on parcel R zero one seven five four dash two five five, from Mr. Castle, here. One thousand one fifty-five. And the last one is parcel R zero three zero seven eight dash four hundred. The bid is two hundred and fifty dollars. Well, this, well, this, did you have a big committee or had a support? I'm not quite sure. First time we've ever done, ladies and gentlemen, say. I mean, you could have formed a committee, but the price was three dollars, and you said it was a lot, so.
No. Because one of these people, look, if you just survive the sentence, nothing has to make any difference. You don't.
You don't make any difference, do you?
Oh, didn't? No, that.
So, will we decide this now?
This now.
Okay.
I have a question. Does the last bid, two hundred fifty dollars bid, cover the cost, or what's your reference?
Uh, let me tell you what the cost, um, is. Uh, on parcel number, the last one, the two hundred and fifty dollars, on the tax deed application, the opening bid was two thousand thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents, the value on the current tax roll was four thousand, and the two thousand nine specific value was fifty dollars hundred, at the time that the value was supposed. But it's now four thousand, I think, though. You got to do the two hundred fifty dollars.
If we check that bid, it goes back on the tax roll, doesn't it?
No. Well, it does if you accept the bid, but if you reject the bid, they can count it, you know.
You don't get any tax on that. I need a little, little counsel here. Dividing the, this, this, if it was in the best interest of the county to keep the parcel, or go ahead and start with the two fifty and put it back on the tax roll.
I got a question, and I don't know whether there's an answer to it. Um, just, how long has it been that the tax has been paid?
Um, I can't see what shows, but...
You follow what I'm doing from that?
Yeah.
And it's not a beating bid, is it?
No.
What?
Um, the property is located, it's block seven, block eight, in Atlanta, Southern Avenue. And that's the subdivision that's behind Dr. Shiger's office in, uh, that's a subdivision.
Oh, very old, yeah.
Right, right, very old.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a hundred by hundred employee, yeah. That's right.
If it's, please, this is a board, I'm gonna put those bids in, so you don't have to...
Will you mind just coming, I should like to ask this?
Yeah, sure. Because I am Dan Castle on the bid, I've retired twenty-five ninety twenty mark, though, and I'd be more than happy to, to pull my bid out, if it was just a bid there. I mean, if you wanted to have it, if not, I, I will not be offended if you reject that bid.
Okay, well, let's, uh, so, I was trying to ask, um, how long has it been that the taxes were paid? So, I can tell from the, you can't tell? No. It does tell, yeah, so it comes in.
What's the parcel number?
Okay, so, you can't tell, so, let me look back and let you...
That's somebody, uh, at the eye.
What's the parcel number for the smartphone? What's the parcel number?
R zero three zero seven eight four.
The parcel number, if you take the R off, is the parcel number, there is no parcel number, just start with R and M.
Zero three zero seven eight dash four zero zero. You don't have a check, you got a check, but I need a year, I just got the actual copy of the bid, and so, uh, how many years you got, you got to pay.
Good thinking, Mr. Bishop, if you want to press some collection.
Well, while we're looking, you said the other one? Yeah, I'm saying, while we're looking, we look at the map, uh, the parcel numbers that they're listed on here is R zero one seven five four dash two two O and R zero one seven five four dash two five five. The highest bid, twenty-five hundred dollars each. Is, is there a motion to, um, accept these bids on these two properties?
Didn't answer the question. You're looking to speak, why I'm looking, there is one on the second one, so. They don't, uh, 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 what's the value, what's the value of this? Value on two two O, the six thousand, or is it ten?
Um, that's true. No, but that's... Zero is two five five.
My value on those are...
On the value, um, R O one seven five four dash two two O, um, there is fifteen point two seven acres.
Fifteen point two seven acres?
I think a lot of it's in red lines, um, looking at the map. The opening bid on that one was being fourteen thousand, seven thirty-three, sixty-three. The value was thirty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars. Oh, that's first one, two two O. I'll tell you what it is next. Uh, the next one, um, which is, um, R O one seven five four dash two five five. The opening bid was fifteen thousand nine fifty-nine, now that's what taxes were owed on at the time we had it protected, please. And the value of that property was twenty-two thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars, and fourteen point five away. So what's the total of the board then on bid two? This two is zero one two five five. Should we now know, uh, more about it?
He, he said twenty-five hundred for either one of those parcels. Do you, that's also paid, is the back taxes just going on?
No, no.
I mean, you're getting, you're getting twenty-five hundred off.
That's the reason that you got it, because nobody wanted to pay what they can do for it. So, if the county's restricted, you add them up, it's fair, it's, it's a tax deed process, and nobody wants to pay that price. So, then, if they own this land for nine days, and they take it for three years, and at the end of three years, it goes along through your defeat, so.
My argument is, is the benefit of the county is, is to go back on the tax roll. If, if we keep it, yeah, if it doesn't go on the tax roll, there's no opportunity. Unless you advertise it to somebody else, if you're in town the next year. Uh... The other thing, if I may, is y'all have advertised it, um, the person that it's bid for is obviously re-versed, that industrial work on it, and decided that he or she wants to put their bid running it on it. It's not doing all any good, just sitting there, who knows, four thirty-two thousand dollars, because we can't even sell it on bid. So, you know, that, that's just, that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is, you know, you might really get a good deal for they have in fact, you know, done their homework.
Well, the value is still gonna be the value.
That, that's what Malcolm's talking about, is the value, if they bought it, um, they're gonna have to pay some taxes, um, on it.
Yeah, and right now, nobody else was in it, except one person, so. My take that, one thing is that, a lot of this is up there towards they go. So, when we had to have the property placed in, that when we advertised to the taxpayers, they, they couldn't get service, they didn't have the lawyers. So, we had to have service, but I think somebody gone here to use a foreword to get in that. And I'm also, you want to even go back on the tax roll, or I think, this person's giving a...
I'll make a motion, would accept the, the, uh, highest bid on all three of the parcels, yeah, I'd say.
And that includes the one with two hundred fifty?
Yeah, including that one, parcel with two hundred fifty, we'll go back on the tax.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Depp. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, from the, on seven through the eighteen, um, I can't, uh, do...
Excuse me. No, I'm, yeah, I've got one, I've got one, uh, comment.
Well, you go ahead, 'cause I've got a couple of questions, a couple of them.
Okay, well, my comment is on, uh, number seventeen. And this is just, this is for y'all's education, if you might admit that, with, on page six, under funding, this, this is a costly reimbursement agreement setting to availability, so. Okay, and then, B says, the State of Florida's performance obligation, saying this should be contingent on handle and appropriation of the legislation. But, this is a refund, this is paying on backs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I just wanted y'all to be aware, yeah. I, I think this, you know, this thing here, this on seventeen, it's a generic, uh, type. I read through the whole thing, you know, a lot of it doesn't apply to, to refund, for me. Maybe I'm longer than applied, but anyway, I just want y'all to remember where, where that.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple, thank you. Young man, I have a couple for a question, was number eleven, the board to consider the protection of the county minister, and things from the district, and to be lighting, building, contract, providing a five seventy hall, at the general, uh, one, the general, the county legislature. Um, and, you know, it's only an extra thirty dollars a month. And my question is, well, first of all, I noticed that it was four lights instead of the two lights that we had. So, my question is, how much lighting, how much extra lighting are we gonna get with just two more lights out there? Is it gonna come back all, kind of, to the effect of, that's the hope, there's LED lights. So, my understanding was that Duke came out and met with Lori Liggins, and that was the recommendation, to light up that parking lot. Um, of course, we'll know when they get in there, um, and, and I can, you know, just double check with them to make sure that it lights up the parking lot. But, my understanding is they're bright lights, and four instead of two, that we felt like that was, that was the bid, then. Well, I have to trust, you know, the professionals, but I'm just, you know, wondering, 'cause I know what two lights, uh, I mean, the amount of light that they generated.
Well, I would, I would say that if we have the lighting fit in, and we don't feel like it's sufficient, we'll be happy to retract out to Duke and ask them, you know, for additional lighting. It's, it's not very extensive, and they were very accommodating as far as it coming out, helping us.
I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Teal, yeah. That's what you do, that's, the LED light, but it has to be better, the forward has to be better. And if we find out it's not lit well enough, we can come back later and address it, with two more. And generally, these folks from Duke and Chicago, they have the expertise to know what they're talking about. I'll, I'll, I'll prove this, let's see what happens. With this, copy that, copy that, copy that, that would come, that would come back later and add more.
Right, and, well, I mean, I, I respect their, their opinion, but I, I have to ask a question, and before we have a motion to approve this, I just wanna say thank you for, um, expediting this, this, um, project and getting it done. Way it's been sort of on the table for a long time, and much needed, and, uh, thank you so much. Now, if there's, are there any other questions or comments on the board? And if not, is there a motion to approve the consent item?
Motion, they're pleased.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Moody, second by Commissioner Depp, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed same time, motion carries, public request, number nineteen, common law packets to appear to further discuss application for residential solid waste services, come here. Hello.
That's fair.
How are you?
I'm so great.
Good, thank you. Tell us about it.
Well, I wanted to start a home, uh, garbage picking service for the T B P area, um, Springwood area, um, Ocean Drive, and maybe a further expansion of this, but, and, uh, I'll burn a stick in, and, uh, do, because we're putting up... And, uh, I've already split in, and all, because we're putting up our town name for this account. But, uh, and I would promote recycling, have a go on.
Okay, I, I had a, a couple of questions if you'd all like. Uh, how many cans are right now, do you think are gonna be put in there?
Well, I don't know. It's been a long range.
Well, that's okay, my next question is. I, I believe in turn adults, I would not like to see them sit out there every day, seven days a week.
No.
Are you, have you got something that you're gonna set up with the people, and I don't know, maybe we need a warrant, I'm not quite sure, that these cans will be put out on your collection day, and took back, you know, during that same time period of that day?
Each customer, they will have the, the cans at their residence, and on pickup day, they will just bring it out to head to head. Or if they're part of mine, won't be on time, or anything, with the animals, or, and I will treat it from there.
What you could do, uh, is you could put it in your contract, uh, with, with the residence, if they, uh, put it out there on the, on the pickup day and take it.
Put it in the day of sale.
Just put it in your contract.
That was my plan. You know? There's gonna be a decree that I'm gonna make of, uh, the Duke's almost like can't do. And for motor recyclers, they won't put the plastics in one bag, you know, a marshmallow, piece of paper. I'll figure that out as we go, as hell, I'll do that, but, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna get this thing.
Yeah, well, I, I know since I've been here, uh, a lot of my constituents have said they would really like this service. Now, my district is north, and you're talking about the south, and you know, you don't know what this will expand into.
This is a, this is a good thing. Um, the board is just picking up for each customer, I'll check the package, to make sure the garbage bags and the things will stay before they can be come up. That way, we'll leave the, uh.
No, no, I, I, you're sorry, I've got a question. Now, you're only gonna pick up bags, garbage, in your reception.
Yes.
You're not going into the yard trash.
Not yard trash, yes.
All right, that's one question.
Outflow garbage, don't.
Outflow, yes, sir. Proper all of that. Now, you gonna do this on Sunday?
Yes, sir, for the time being.
And, and I think when you discuss it, when you found, if they, if they, their garbage is special. You're saying this is one of our roll offsides?
Yes, sir.
Rather than having all the agreements?
Yes.
All right, which roll offside do you anticipate you?
One, one close to fitting, like, uh, one is, uh.
Blue Creek?
Blue Creek, and one up here off of, uh, Puck Road. Off of Puck Road, there's a thousand.
Those will be your two primary ones.
Yes, sir.
And we wanna make sure they're open at the time. We'll work with you to measure, we got enough space. I mean, I don't have any huge yards, the garbage you're gonna be bringing in.
Well, Ken's pretty big, I, I hope about filling half whole bay park. It'll be enough, let's say if you have a three household family, let's say if you have a mother, father, two children, you're gonna probably have about eight bags of garbage. And I can't believe enough of that.
Oh, man. We, we, we'll work out all that.
We'll get with you after we're spoken to here.
Uh, uh, just work with our solid website. I was, it's, it's, I appreciate that, I, I mainly make that sign, that, um, and it never makes, there is recycling, there's, there's, and, uh, it's gonna lean, and rolling all that on, and, um.
I was catching all the way to every house in the county.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Like, if we can help you, be sure and, and come back to us, because this company is really glad you're doing.
We, we do have one issue, it's part of the requirement under the ordinance, uh, he's required to carry a bomb. It's very expensive to get a bomb, but what we're here tonight to ask is if you've got ways of buying a bomb, um, for this, uh. I think originally, I wasn't sure if it was really done. I think it was originally done with thinking of, of our business coming in and incorporating the whole county, those things. Oh, it was a real short, small one, too.
I'm gonna let our county help us with that, send it out.
Y'all know my feelings on bombs. It's up.
Tell us again.
I do not like them. I, I need you to, yeah, to come back on, you know, um. I think you have this hard way to buy some bombs.
Sure.
Um, now, um, that's giving you that, or that's giving you that, that break, so Congress, we appreciate this. Don't, no, you, not me, just don't have these people out there. Pardon my tone, I think I'm, I'm making way of bombs.
I'm all for helping you, and if we can land up, bomb, I'm, I'm good with it.
Most of you's way of the bomb. Let me ask you quick.
Sure.
What's that way of the bomb, B?
What are you talking about?
I believe it's fifteen hundred dollars, but. Seventy-one, uh, application. I think we'll keep it fifteen hundred, two thousand, one, yeah.
Starting a business, it's a big hit.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with it, just wanting to.
Yes, sir.
I've worked.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I've already, uh, had my labor insurance, my baseball insurance, it is plugged it in my, uh, application, and I've already got that all in there, and, um. Been on guard, that's how I've been doing things, jumping guns, you know, to make sure. It's one, we pick up, for right now, against her, and it will, I get one of them.
I think once you get going, you'll have more people calling you, and you, and you realize, um, most of course, with, with lots of, you know, there's, there's often about it.
Yeah, there, there are. Okay, so, I'm going in.
Might be calling you too, I'm not, I, yes, sir, I'm, things like that. Um, I don't wanna say I can get something else from here, I really appreciate your thing, just last time, uh, Mr. Howard. Um, stood here before you on my behalf, I hadn't, wouldn't, far, can't hear you, don't call you, but, uh, I'm a nature.
We, we, we wanna help you, um.
Leave that. I don't know what my story about the lawyer this time, he says eighteen, you know.
Just no, sir.
Okay.
We have a motion on the table from Commissioner Page, is there a sec?
That's it.
Second by Commissioner Mee, any further discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you all, that was my thought, thank you. If you have the whole county, if you're willing to come back and pay a bond, we make it some more possible.
Thank you all, very, I want to come to that one.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to, uh.
Common law from twenty-five, Tom, CEO, Dr. Phil, Dr. Phil. Our issue is that hospital may have been seen with the board, it is due.
Now, what I, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit, talk about the boiler repair, confusion in the boiler repair. Um, when, um, Lori and Boyce went through, and what we had submitted was confusion about what the actual cost was gonna be for each boiler. Um, and so, what I tried to do was, was, um, lay that out and provide you the documents behind it. Um, each boiler has fifty tubes and three hundred fifty-six dollars in maintenance, a total of nineteen thousand, I think, I may have forgotten. Per boiler. Uh, the cost quoted for the labor to reach the, the boiler was twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. And there was some confusion about that back here in their, their original proposal, when, when Wanda got. Um, in fact, we were confused at the first time, that, that was the total cost for, when we reread it, and reread it, each of the two costs, and the, um, cost to re-tube was on one boiler only. Uh, the actual cost of, of re-tube each boiler was forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. As I understand, the first order, now, let, let Wanda talk a little bit about that. Um, um, we, um, I think there's, what I saw from the documents, that you had approved forty-seven thousand five hundred sixty, that's by Wanda. And that was for the two sets of tubes, thirty-eight, where the confusion came in was at the cost to re-tube the boiler. And we, we figured out we did it today, where it was actually, um, the twenty-three thousand, seven sixty-three. Um, and so, um, I, I guess the issue here is, all the tubes have been produced based on the, the, um, the, um, first boiler that the county put through, and the discussion we had with them, so. All of which is fifty-five have been put in, fifty-five are currently sitting in Jacksonville to be delivered. Um, and each of those, each of those fifty-five, about nineteen thousand, two, two, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, there was only, I think, eight, I don't, I think, for the repair, was only about the eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Where in fact, um, the, the repair of the first one was, was actually, um, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. Um, so, we're, you know, we're timing in a, a situation, we have to, we have a hundred and ten tubes that have been built for the boiler. Um, but, the issue really comes in, your, 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 um, your requisition for, for to cover all tubes, whereas the, the, the cost of, uh, replacing the tube is problematic.
Um, just a minute.
I know, it's confusing. I'm very.
Okay. You said that twenty-three thousand, seven sixty-three was quoted as the cost of labor to, to do it, right? And, but, and the actual cost was eight thousand dollars?
No, 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 that, that's where the confusion came in, on the invoice, the invoice was, was eight thousand dollars, that.
How did that work?
Labor cost. I, I.
There's a way the quote was writ, was written, because the tube was, the tube was nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. And then, the next line reads, "We are pleased to quote manpower as required to reseed the boiler as outlined above for a total cost of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars." So, the assumption was, if you took twenty-three, seven sixty-three, and you backed out the, the cost of the tube, that would leave you at the labor cost. But, that wasn't. It was the nineteen, six, twenty-four, plus the twenty-three, seven sixty-three per boiler.
Now, I don't know, not what they, about the.
I don't know what, but I'm, I'm alive.
But. The tube, this is what the tube cost nineteen, say nineteen thousand, and the labor? Over twenty-five dollars?
More labor than the tube, more labor than the tube.
Is that, um, involved to, is it something like that?
It was, uh, it was estimated to be five to seven days, it took four to five days. Um, the, the group that came in, because they were the only group that we could find at that time, were traveling from Jacksonville to over additional expenses over hunt ops and downing hauls. I think our, on the second boiler, we would go out and, and look for quotes, because we have the opportunity, multiple quotes, to do that. I think that cost can come down, how much that cost can come down, if they can't sell it from the ship.
Definitely will. I've always carried two different companies out there, and selling the boiler, and then, and do a lot of them like that, and everybody said that was high. Brothers told me that.
Yeah, we were caught, kind of, in a situation that we had, no, no, at the time, we were looking, nobody was really interested, because of the type of tubes, we had the green man fashion, but we have the tubes that are there. But, that, that, um, it's a lot simple to get it done, and have somebody come in and do it.
They said the price of tube was ten miles, and the price of the tube just said.
No.
Getting better, ready, and delivered, that was in the ballpark, but the labor was out of the ballpark.
Right.
Okay.
And so, unfortunately, it was done under that service contract, and having to get done right away, and, um, personally declined at that time. Want to do that, um, and I think they estimated the worst, worst-case scenario, that's what they think, that's one.
There, there.
In the board, yes, sir.
So, what. Is our call in the street being, when we approved this, this was for, for one boiler, one boiler repair, the tube. And we approved more than seven thousand, twelve dollars, right? But that, but you didn't, didn't do.
By the way, it was for, it was for both of them, the original purchase order was for a hundred and ten tubes, and two reseeding of the tubes at labor, which was forty-one, thirty-nine. So, the intent of the first purchase order was for both boiler repairs, the tubes and the labor. But, when the bill came in, there wasn't, we could only pay for one boiler and half of the tube.
And the shock call is thirty-four thousand, fifty, one hundred dollars, maybe more than that.
Yeah, because we can't take into consideration the, the contingency.
Okay, that's true.
Right. I would take that, I, we just need to start over again, the new purchase order, and I would say the worst-case scenario is another forty-three, three eighty-seven, because we have to pay for the tube, and we have to pay for the labor, and we don't know what that is yet. But, we know it should not be any more than the twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three.
Okay, so, what you're here to do, Mike, is to ask for an additional thirty-four thousand dollars, basically, is that what?
No, uh, because my number, I wasn't working within your process, so, I was just trying, just trying to look at what, what the numbers were. And I included the contingency in there, and, and that, but, you have to go with the, 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 we talked about it. We need to start over again. So, the, the main issue, I think, that the, the tubes need to be paid for, because they were mainly taxed out in California, and they are applied again, which is the nineteen thousand each. And then, the twenty-three thousand for the, uh, installation on that one. Um, so, I'm, I don't know how to work that out with the, with the, with the three major costs.
Now, I'm still confused. When the time comes to do the other board with the tubes that were purchased, got made, we'll get free bids on that labor. And then, that's price should change.
This first purchase order was for fifty-five tubes or for a hundred and.
The original purchase order was for a hundred and ten tubes, yeah.
Well, why, why is it still not for a hundred and ten tubes?
Well, because there wasn't enough in the purchase order to pay for the tubes and the labor. So, I received fifty-five tubes, and, and then, what was left in the purchase order, we used for the labor.
Okay.
Oh, really?
It's still all something, because you didn't have enough.
Well, the, the next one would, the next purchase order really, at this point, would be to pay for the other fifty-five, fifty-five tubes, and then, we'll work with, Jim's been working with it. Go out and get a quote, and come back, and, and, and do that, and hopefully bring that down to the next level.
So, what do you want to ask for forty-three thousand, three eighty?
A lot, it would be.
A lot, it would be, because Jim will work, because I save some money on the labor part. So, if we approve the high number, and then comes in somewhat lower, we'll all be happy.
Yes, I'm, okay, now, I have a question before you make a motion. I'm fixing to make a motion.
I'm not fixing to make a, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, so, now, I wanna ask, how much money do you still have from the one set self-pack, that we still have a balance going there?
There is, there is a balance going there.
How much is that?
I'm not sure, we, we gotta talk to them.
Three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and some dollars, but you can't use it for money. Okay, so, it was to, it construct hospital and quit, not for money. Okay, so, the, the three hundred plus laying out there, is it just gonna be there? Well, it'd be in the stock, right?
No, we're, 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 we've been, we've been talking about what, what, and that's, uh, a second point here, I wanted to bring up, where, uh.
He's gonna go break our record.
Yeah, well. We're gonna try, like. You know, it has to do with, 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 with equipment related to the, the building, not, not anything else.
What? I'm gonna play one thing to go along with the tube. You know, we had to only have a plate, though, at that time, the hospital certainly shut down, so, the other ones would, would.
I understand, we have to do, I understand.
Everybody understands that.
And cur, currently, the, the boiler can be, you re-tube it down, but it's down because we, we couldn't inspect it, and so, it is down for three days right now. Um, and the inspection is not, not safe, it's our insurance, I mean, the company's inspecting, we anticipate it will be okay to put back up, but it has the same problems that, that the other boiler has, which is the period issue of tubes, and wall business, and stuff like that.
And it helps, do I expect something?
It, it did, we, um, we have, uh, or I didn't, but, but, I know the heat's our, our, uh. It, it did, we, um, we asked, uh, or I did, but, but, I don't know, we used our, our, our plan operations after when we were in, did, did it last the life expectancy, and it's like, yeah, these type of tubes, well, it seems like only ten years, twelve years, fifteen's probably a long time, and some occasions, it might seem some go, um, seventeen to twenty, but that's very unusual. So, they did, they lasted seventeen years, so, they did last their life. Now, some of that has to do with the time over the seventeen years, um, a lot of oxygen or working for nature, a high, high pouring content and stuff happens, things to do with that, that are, are normal for the system we're in. Um, and, you know, you all have paid for, prior to I came, to rebuild the front end of the boiler, which I think was about fifty-two thousand dollars in hope, so when these, this other boiler is re-sued, we really have, basically, uh, pretty much, almost a boiler business, you know, out of, just packages, is, is not here. And at the same time, we've been replacing other parts of that, but we go along with smaller parts.
What, what source did we get the original, what money cost?
Uh, general fund reserve for contingency, because it's not capital.
Our general fund for contingency.
Yep.
Well, what we need to do, when we got, we all realize, the hospital building is getting of an age, where it's going to require some maintenance. And we need a hospital, you know, to do, it makes a difference. We need hot water.
But I, I don't want it to be real cold in there, because that's probably what you use, the, 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 the water.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we take forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars for a boiler repair to Dr. Mungo on hospital, and the general fund for contingency.
I'll definitely make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pace, we've got two seconds. But, um, okay, second by, uh, Commissioner Boogie. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes, time stands, back in series.
The, the technical issue, doesn't like, kind of, anything here, but we've been working with us, been working with the city after the, uh, shutdown, and the, um, the block shut down. The, the city came in, said that they wanted to put in a new, um, meter, and a new backflow, uh, on, on hospital. We've done a lot of research, the plans, on, on, the plans that we got, uh, we've come back and looked, and, uh, a lot of the concerns, I understand, is that we did have, we do have backflow protection at, at the building. Um, we're of the nature that maybe we don't need to have that other backflow protector put in, and that's twenty, I think, I'll say, I forget. Twenty thousand dollars, uh, I think is the, the, the total, uh, cost, the total, to do that. Um, I don't think we're in a position to recommend that, but we've got, it was, the, the city's pressing pretty hard on that. We did confirm that a lot of the, a lot of the, um, rumors, or whatever, how, how the building was hyped, that there was other, other, um, well, into the, into the roof in the building, that's confirmed, but that's not there. That basically, there is a, a continuous roof that goes around the building, and, um, so that it, it is a single, single, there, there's no, um, there, uh, what else could lie coming to the building? So, um, you know, I, we don't have the money, and our position is that, that we're not sure it needs to be done, but it probably still needs to be discussed with, with the city, which they know.
I talked to the city today about it, after researching and looking at all the drawings, and, and walking all the pipe down, looking everywhere out, I thought we would put a brand-new backflow preventer and meter out there by the highway. We've got one, all we've got three small lines coming off of that header, that goes around there, that doesn't have any protection on them, and it would be mighty cheap to put a, a meter, and a backflow preventer on the small line, and beating trailer, that's behind the hospital, that's all that is. And that will eliminate, there won't be nothing on that header that don't have a backflow preventer and a meter. All these years, there's been water use on the trailers, that isn't on the meter, you know, and, but now, the city, I talked to them today about it, and I just, you know, I want it all, have a backflow preventer and meter on it, but I don't spend that twenty thousand dollars just.
Middle of Florida, I like to keep the.
Yeah, we understand with it, we, we know that when the, um, the, the Shandair trailer went, they just tapped that line, and we got all permission to, to do that. Well, we didn't, we assisted them in doing it, and, um, there wasn't a backflow, you know, backflow needed to be, or somewhere in between, where shortly, it may be across a little roadway to put a backflow in there. Um, that needs to have a meter or two, but the meter will basically be zero, because the only time water will be used is that.
You, you, they want to look at, look, look, backflow preventer, and a meter on it, on one inch front, and then run the line with a three trailer. And a small line, just a, 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 I reckon, and a, and a shower.
The, the new trailer will have a shower, two bathrooms, and then a kitchen. The old trailer will be gone, uh, the old Shandair trailer, as soon as the new one, um, is, is certified, and we have to, it has, it, it, it has to be certified, because of the, the type of building, just, and then our trailer, which was home health, is, has two bathrooms, and then a hall.
I don't understand how they got tied into that header without having a meter on it, that's the city doing right there, and, uh.
It got meter and the backflow prevented.
They, they neither want to. All right, I got, I picked the one, one, one of these as a valve there, for the hot testing headers coming around the hospital.
Well, I never, I always felt it didn't, it had a business, and it was commercialized, or commercialized, you, you had to have a backflow preventer. Because it should be debit to one of those, if you have a backdraft coming in, you lost what?
Well, there, we're, there's a turkey business. Well, there's, there's, yeah, there's two, yeah, there's two stuff, those trailers itself, so there's, there's, you know, water coming in, it's only enough trailers, they're not part of the hospital, so, but that, by knowledge, we knocked down, but there's another one coming in there.
Those, those trailers could be hooked to one valve and meter, you know, I mean, if, if, one meter and one backflow preventer, and you eliminate anything in the header that doesn't have it on it. And if it didn't, when they did that, I don't know.
Yeah, and we, we, I asked, when did they go in, I guess, I think ago, fifteen years ago, right in the hospital, how, you may have that knowledge, and that's, and I, well, I would. But then it's been a long, long.
That's the way, that's the way, we have to have a lady there, I think, for the center.
They told me today, that they would show me the other two lines, I know one's out, I got a picture on the phone with the other two, they're gonna show me the other two places. They could actually be kept off if they had it. And then we have one backflow preventer and one meter, and then run the lines, the, the trailer, and that, that'll eliminate all that, and, and I, I fly on that with it right now. All right, and then you'll, we'll figure out a cost, which would be a lot less than, a lot less than.
Well, we'll see what that cost is, yeah. Now, if, if Shand, if it is Shandair, they'll, they'll, they'll do that, that cost, so, uh, uh, and the only, the only trailer, I think, that, that, that we would have, would be, be our trailer, unless, all of that whole thing was just established. Uh, the only other thing I want to do.
Do the action on this, you have to, I just wanted to let you know.
Well, just in case, now, I guess the last time I spoke with Mr. Brown, he was pretty adamant, that, and this was a couple of weeks ago. My only concern is that if we need to move quickly on this, if it is determined that we need the big meter and the backflow preventer, that's about twenty-four thousand dollars. And that is something that would qualify for capital from the hospital's, um, bond, one cent money that's left over. They have about three hundred and thirty thousand. So my question is, do we need authorization to be able to utilize this fund if we need to do something within the next two weeks? Or do we need to bring it back to the board?
If, if it comes to shut up, and they say we're gonna bust the world off and get onto it?
Yes, sir.
We'll have to do that.
Bring it back to the board.
Bring it back to the board, and we can make that special meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay, thanks.
Um, just, just, I, I wanted to go ahead, and we're beginning our budgeting process, I wanted to go ahead and, uh, give you all, we talked, uh, today, give you the graph of our capital equipment budget, um, we deserve anything I do to speak up, uh, looking forward, you know, uh, looking at replacement and other things, uh, on medical equipment, that, up to nearly seven hundred million dollars, uh, was one of the, what, you know, if we're winning the lottery, we have to, we can help out.
Can you signify these, that, or, uh, the, uh, any, um, brain things, from, from what happened, really needs?
Right, we're, we're, we're going through that process again, a few times, a few times, a few times. We have, we have, um, seven years, we have nineteen, just a couple items in there, and the only thing you'll see on that is the shoulder, which is what we could be coming back. We have, we have done all the specifications, and that, working with engineers, so, being able to, a lot of it, you know, counting in here, would get involved in trying to, to help us develop the, the bid for that, but I don't think we, we should, do think enough based on that, come out of, come through, oh, yeah, I'm, um, and then there, there, um, that, we're, we're going back through, and looking back, going back through, and all the items that we, the one in, in, in two thousand and twenty, trying to prioritize, uh, other couple things, um, we, oh, I like, and, we've been working with T M H since they're building a brand-new surgical facility. There might be the ability to, for us to acquire some of those, like, we have some newer life, so, maybe, to, to, the life has been in there for that a long time, so. Just wanted to let you kind of, uh, see some of the things that we're, we're looking at. And then with that, um, this, this should give you an idea, we wanted to show you, um, just so, um, that's an informational item. We did this recently, when we went to town, happened, it's Ken, myself, Pat, and London did, along with another person from our staff, to talk a little bit about, about funding and Medicaid and state, and all of that, and, uh, this particular thing. Um, this kind of lays out what some of the problems are today, from, we'll, we'll, you know, I'll be here. Um, it, it's kind of interesting, this is two thousand seventeen, guys, so, it, it, our cost report for seventeen has been filed, our cost report for eighteen hasn't been filed, so we didn't, didn't take any. But, um, on the top line shows what our costs are, just costs, salary, supplies, for various, uh, different payers. For traditional Medicaid, which has gone down significantly, because the state has basically converted Medicaid to managed care products. Um, our cost for those patients were four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in total, and the Medicaid managed care was two point five million. Medicare and Medicaid is a, is a combination of, um, some people on Medicare do are eligible for Medicaid, which is almost a million dollars. And then, they go with the uninsured for a total of six million, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The, the second line shows the payments that we receive to take care of, of those patients in total, for that six point, four million, we only receive just a little below two million dollars. So, the reality of this, in, in, in these major categories of not dealing with insurance, that we've given the cost, and what we were paid, there was three, almost three point five million dollars in cash that provided services to these, that we, we weren't reimbursed for. And, um, you know, that's, one of the big issues that we have, is, is that we have this large group that, that, that the cost of even providing care outweighs significantly, um, uh, what, what we, what we didn't reimburse. Um, what we, the addition we would have gotten with, which in dish for both federal, state programs, would have been five hundred thousand, but that still shows that about three million dollars in cash money to take care of the patients. If we actually had that three million dollars, we'd be in pretty good shape, we could capitalize, we could do some things, we could pay for eye and data, but, um, when we were gone through and looking at that, and after having gone to town, house, and, and we were here tonight, we kind of showed you one of the big challenges we have, in, in trying to, to balance the books and, and make things work. In general, most of the insurance is from fairly close, except a few of the, the managed care, um, managed care, the all-in-one, and then it's terrible, they don't, they don't provide services, they try not to pay, and some of the others are, are pretty good, but, the, the real problem, the, the biggest problem, actually, comes in Medicaid, and those, those areas, the way that they're Medicaid, be quite frankly, right now, there's a, a, upon, in the legislature, there's, there's a three percent cost, which is about seventy-five thousand dollars, but no increase to come in the next year, so, just, uh, on Medicaid. And we're like all the rural, you know, we, our, our percentage of Medicaid is, is greater than most of the other facilities, because of the big world, uh, the, the, the economy, a lot of the, of individuals, and, 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 and.
And, 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 you sure, although you share a good one, representative of the city?
Yeah.
What was it?
Well, they, they don't, well, first of all, we don't have a representative currently, but we, we did meet with, um, Lauren, uh, what is the, uh, uh, somebody who's probably, who's probably gonna run for Senator Monser's seat next year. Um, she has some ties to rural health, it turns out, 'cause, uh, we're talking, talking about a facility on her end, and she asked me when, when I ran, her, um, her cousin is in a position that I know well, and her grandfather is in a position I know well. So I think she, she has a far better feel for rural health, and she's currently a representative in part of Leon, or, or, you know, in Leon County. Um, then, um, Senator Monser wasn't available, they were in, in a lot of meetings, but, but he's been very, um, responsive to us when we got in, and, and we really don't have a house in, in representative, in the house right now. Uh, they were trying to set up, um, we were kind of a tag team to meet with Senator Dean, Senator, uh, in healthcare appropriations, but that hasn't gotten set up yet, they're trying to show these numbers, and we've consistently done this kind of presentation when we went up.
What about the, um, the candidates, the, uh, running for, the representatives, have you talked to them about, they haven't been there yet, and?
I, I, I had the opportunity to talk to, to Washington, uh, but I haven't had the opportunity to, to talk to, to the other candidates that, that went up. And, you know, we tried a lot, I've seen that anybody that wants to come, to come, but, you know, we're, we're kind of a last issue on, I think, um, because it's an issue that, that unless we have, the state has more money, it's almost impossible to resolve, but it's, you know, um, when you look at, if, if, when you look at Taylor County, one of the great assets, the ball, ball, and, and all of that, and the people, but one of the other assets we have moving forward is, we have a good hospital, we have nine hospitals, and that's, that's how economically, it's, it's very prime building line, on bringing other people in, in, in performance.
How is it this now?
It's been low, it's, it's up and down, we'll be, fourteen, fifteen, down to six, I, I noticed today was odd, um, we have one person on the floor between my two, so that's kind of how, how it goes, we, you know, maybe ten, twelve. Again, the patient is not, you know, the patient is being delivered and born, more and more, the time goes on, and, uh, you, you know, there's more and more of the outpatient patients, uh, some of, you know, in the, in the capital budget, some of the things, uh, we looked at, one of the years that we've lost a lot of business recently has been mammography, and it has to do with that, uh, a three D mammography. And it's, it's not that it's superior, it, it is superior in some way, but what it does is, is allow the patients going to have three D mammography, if they need to have, if there's. is allow the patients going to have three D mammography if they need to have, if there's things that the radiologist wants to look at, it gives them a little bit better picture of that. And also, they can, they can go through and look at the different criteria things that typically they don't have to go back. So we're looking at whether or not, we don't have the capacity to, we are out looking at whether or not we, how they're able to, maybe leave that on the five year lease. The hope would be that that would bring in not only mammography back here, you know, going to townhouse, but also it does play in where there are studies that are done. And there are things that want to be looked at beyond, you know, it usually means that people get off of that, which would be another, another service. We're doing some things, working at, trying to work through test pain points with other patients that sometimes we discharge or go to townhouse, we could keep here and do some of the study. That takes us to working in to work with the cardiologists in townhouse in their conference, at the same time we've got to have our physician come on, you know, so we are looking, trying to, beginning of the day, and really doing other things to, to build up the, you know, we've had some stability in positions last year. Primary care was probably going to need another primary care in the next year or so, or another standard. It'd be nice to find an interim medicine physician, a couple interim medicine physicians. As you all know, they tend to be, they tend to be more comfortable with taking care of bigger patients and practicing the training. So we, you know, we are, are trying to do everything we can, but again, sometimes we come down with money and are looking to do some of the things.
Different from the old days?
Different from the old days.
How we used to go to hospital back then?
Right, and I go back, way back to old days, the first hospital I worked, working in, in the labs, there, there were two hundred dead and we ran a casualty, probably a hundred and one, three hundred, five hundred, a hundred and a half there, and only stay with anyone that was in there. But I thank you for listening, and I thank you for the love and the knowledge you have on your own.
Thank you.
Thank you. Especially my friend Jim, all your help out there, your expertise, trying to do as well as we can.
Next, we'll go to some other hospitals, others, supplemental units, number twenty-one, the perp, you know, I think I'll skip twenty-one and go on down to twenty-two and then twenty-three since we've got the sheriff and the lady to go back to twenty-one. So, oh, it's okay with the board, I'm going to go to twenty-two. The board can consider approval of a budget amendment for all city deputies detailed reimbursement for the sheriff's office as amended by Sheriff Wayne Penn.
Good evening, ma'am. Thank you for taking the time to speak up. We just wanted to try to get an amendment for the money that already put in our budget, we put the services out, you know, just wanted to see the money put back in our budget. I do have just a couple of mountains we might inform the board. My chief deputy, Chuck Niss, had to resign due to his retirement, his new job, anyway, he's gone, and I, I would replace him with a party cop, just to take a role of chief deputy. Also, we'll be looking with Chris Ganson as the regular, Bert Smith. Hey, she's been running Bert Smith for so long, she does, has been doing a good job, I feel confident that she can take the torch and run with it without these problems. And I thank you all for the opportunity to let us have Bert Smith. We're looking forward with every time that you get a brother, as you see all the reports, looks real good, they're not really coming out for the public yet, but they will be. I'm satisfied with, as far as the U C R report, I'm definitely satisfied with most of the drugs that you can, but where the word I say is, probably you would say that. And the reason why is because of the drug that's for us to do, that was chronic, I'm glad to see that turn, tide turns somewhere, but I appreciate that. Is that what's simple, for you, personally? Got any questions?
I got a question. Now, this, this budget amendment that you asked me for, the revenue that you received because of the services you provided for the blood logs and physical care accessible, now, now, we've gone and said, well, we didn't get much.
That, ma'am, and the board needs to know that we think that coming into the budget is in excess of the basic agreement. So what it boils down to, that your, we see that in September, will be cut by whatever you're putting in September. So, for six months on one was forty-one five eight five, and the other one was twenty-six two oh seven, you have to drive it sixty-eight thousand dollars, that's only for six months. So you time back, time back, that's how much you're going to be short again with a year only left. And I don't think we look today, and I don't think that this kind of request, we, we haven't used the money to make the work call.
Well, if, if we approve this request, ma'am, does that mean that at the end of the year, you'll have more money to give back, uh, which we've used for the bonds and what not?
I think there's a misunderstanding, but I, I'm a little bit confused. What, what is, this money is that we hadn't used budget money to pay overtime for the all city details, because we used to pay it out of a special fund. When the auditors came in, they said you can't do that anymore. So all this is doing is reimbursing the share of those expenses related to the all city details.
So your expenses decreased what you have budgeted?
Yes, absolutely. That's what we're saying, is that we hadn't used money that was budgeted to pay the overtime for the all city details. We're just bringing the money back into the budget for the, for the normal use of the sheriff's budget. The other item on the grant is, we created two new positions with the Voca Grant. We also got a position with Big Ben to provide on-call services for them for the mental health program, where they pay up money for that. And that money's coming in, but we're expending the money to the deputies or to the Voca Grant people. We're just getting their salary reimbursed. The sheriff had to take that out of this current budget to pay those salaries. So that decreased our current budget by that amount. We're just asking for the money to be reimbursed to the budget to make the budget whole again. So whatever money that you would get at the end of the year, still won't be the money that you get at the end of the year. The budget, he has spent that money out of his budget already, and it wasn't budgeted, those items were not budgeted out.
One more question, my name is, when we approved your budget, you had a lot of items in there for overtime.
That's a, that's a, yeah, that's a discretionary line item for like storms and stuff, if we have any overtime that we're not getting guarded.
See that?
I would, that makes sense.
That brings up a question, that you used to pay these officers who worked off these workers back?
No, we're not, we're not speaking about it.
No, we haven't seen it, sir.
These, these, these are money, we used to pay this out of a separate fund, and the auditor come in and said he can't do that, that's, that's not related to that. So we run it through our payroll, we run it through, we're in the company, deputies cover, everything's available for that system.
We had to pay retirement on those, too. They said if you got to pay the retirement, you can't have a deputy that works full time for you, go out and do a special detail and pay them a flat rate without paying their taxes, without paying their social security, without paying their retirement, you can't do that, that's what the auditors told us. So the only way we could come up with to do it, and keep them covered by workers' comp, and the sheriff's association told us, that if they're not on the clock for the sheriff, then they're uncovered by the workers' comp. So the only way we could do it was to put them on overtime, that would be overtime rate, and then we charged the businesses or whoever likes hiring for us, we charged them to reimburse us for what we had to spend to cover those details. So that's what.
Go ahead.
Check, I appreciate all you do for, for this town, especially in this effort to keep the town of Groves, you have to count me out a lot, like you provide every, every Voca Grant and state hedge. And I don't think you billed us for that. And when I ask you to give a simple bill.
I, I thought we did this one.
No, no, all right, all right. We're not doing the horse trade that day. What, what is your request? And you provide us the service.
I promise you, I will give you that we're going to provide the service, whatever we got to do.
Well, that's all I've got left.
So what exactly are you asking me?
I'm asking for some, some commitments on sharing, he's going to continue to provide us the service and not sell us the book.
We let a table last time, but I don't know.
He called out that, he's talking on submit. We got time, yeah.
That's right. I agree with you.
Good to tell you, Jim.
I'm quite sure that, that it ain't on the way.
All right. I've asked you all a question, that's, that's true.
You say you have two new positions?
Yes, we have two, uh, Dicma advocates, that's what the Voca Grant stands for, Dicmas Prime Advocates, and we got a, I can't remember the total amount, one hundred and twenty-eight or one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to provide staffing. That's it, provide staffing and stuff like that. So we don't have a firm bill yet on what we, we spent to send out for the grants reimbursed. So that other stuff was a traffic grant for the guys that work overtime on traffic that gets reimbursed by the traffic grant.
So all your, you, two new positions, just on a, on, for all these, you have a grant that will come down year after year after year?
Well, we, we have to apply year after year after year.
But that's a contract?
Yes, ma'am, we just sent the application in for the next year's grant, it was due, and we sent it in before the deadline to get it approved for the next year. So if they go next, those two.
Your, your contract?
Yes, ma'am, pretty much.
Any more questions from the board? Okay, what is the, um, what's the meeting something for?
Thank you.
What's the criteria?
Order was down. I don't know.
Five is out. No, sixty-seven, seven, nine, six, dollars.
Is that the total, is anything like for all of them?
Yeah, but, but they have restrictions on two of those grants, and I, I myself acknowledge that any signature project, first date, one is January thirty-first, and the other one was February twenty-fifth, you can't charge those two grants. So those two grants will be from the dates of those, those grants.
Those grants are, yes, okay. You go with that, then, then, six, seven, eight, that money then?
Seven, nine, two, sixty-seven, seven, nine, six.
Okay. Got it. Thank you, sir.
And is there a motion to approve, disapprove, or what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm not sure they're approving.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Moody, sir, six.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Dean, can you front a discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All in consensus, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I'm leaving, hold me if you see to it, say so. We're gonna do it. Appreciate it.
And look at that, item twenty-one, the perp, he's pressed bottom with ten of the nine, call out this agreement for the city of Perry, as received from Public Risk Management of course.
Well, it's a, it's a form, the, that I got from Public Risk Management, I talked to the lady, and she says that agreement needs to be recorded in the board's minutes. But if you'll see back there, there's a blank signature, and she said that the original was signed by everybody who participated, so she has this sign, she doesn't want this agreement to be announced. And telling he does participate in that Public Risk Management of course. So that's the only reason I put on here, so it's recorded.
Do we need a motion for it to that happen?
For me to record it.
Okay.
Okay, so motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye. All in consensus, motion carried. Tell me staff items, I need for the board to discuss fire risk, disaster plans, and further discuss the fire assessment as amended by Mayor Cassin, fire people.
Good evening, everybody. I will probably get to this, this is all I'm getting, I'm probably hold up. At the, one of the recent workshops, the board discussed the fire assessment a little bit more, and table this to today to take any action. And as part of that, the board requested that I can give a five-year plan on improvements to the fire service, the fire staffing. And that is what we will do today. Um, we have to go through this, and we'll go word for word, and I won't bore you with that, we'll give you the big hit items on it and what we're looking at. The first few pages of this report, it's information for you to fix, to explain how we came up with the needs that we had and justification for where, what station could get that before and second, and so on and so forth. And as you can see, the fire districts have got an explanation where it says district two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and it tells you roughly now the area, and on the final page of the map, give you an idea of how large the districts are, and that they're not exactly the same as the commission districts, so this gives you a little idea of what the districts look like. On page two, the historical data, the first thing we did, because with this report giving us is a five-year plan, and not, we're not going over five after five, we'll reevaluate. The reasoning for that is a lot of things can change in five years, and we set a twenty year plan, we might be making plans for some of this, doesn't make sense anymore, so we don't make it five years at a time, and then we go back and reevaluate the data. And based off that, that's, we use five years worth of, worth of data to come up with what we, what we came up with. The first section of the, is the districts and their amount of call volume they had and the increase from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, and right below that is their graph to kind of show you the percentage of where our call volume is. You can see the last year that between, well, the whole coastal area, including Eaton Beach and Sean Hasty, accounts for fifty percent of our total call volume. So when we were responding, it called fifty percent of the time is to the coastal area, forty-eight percent of the time is just was to Eaton Beach and that area.
Now, that includes, are there a lot of also?
That would be in district four, but you can see no line there, and they account for two percent of our volume. Last year, we ran fourteen calls, and that's pretty much, if you look on the back page of the map, you'll see zone four, so pretty much everything from Caddie Road Road, west is there, would be, so a lot of those numbers, when we say we had fourteen calls in that district, a number of those are I think behind Highway ninety-eight. So right now, what we're seeing is, last year, our call volume in Eaton Beach and District six was ten percent of our call volume, with the fact that we're staffing that now with our state grant position, Monday to Friday, we're expecting to see that number grow drastically, because we'll, we'll be providing first response for medical calls to support that. So we're expecting that in this upcoming year, that data can change drastically, the number of call volumes that we're running at. My, my, I would expect it to be a little more like the district, district's giving three hundred. The next one going down from there is our average response time for districts. So you can see District two, last year, we had an average response time of about nine minutes, nine point two six minutes, District three, those are the, both covered by Station one, there is no District one for our hater, because they do a county-wide response. So those are the two districts that are very close to, and are served, that are quickly by Station one, are, are first that, and that's why we see these low numbers on, on those two stations. District four is that last year's average was twenty-six, twenty-nine, three minutes, Eaton Beach area, District six, eighteen point three, seven minutes, District seven, Sean Hasty, was six point three, six minutes, District eight is eighteen point zero nine. When we look at these numbers, the numbers that are supported by buried staffing are all, are almost always under our ten-minute national average, what we're supposed to be hitting. And then the stations that we're, we're seeing our data that we're not getting those numbers, are the ones where we're solely relying on the office staffing order, are proven from town, respond to the outline area. The next one, the next page is the NFPA seventeen point standard for combination fire, fire department. That tells us how many people we should have on our team, and how fast we can be getting there. And I say the ten-minute average, that's where, where I'm getting most of that information from. You can see the suburban area, um... Um, you can see the suburb, suburban area, um, just counts somewhere between five hundred and thousands of people per square mile. Um, we're supposed to have ten people on all of those calls, um, and we're supposed to be there within ten minutes, eight, or nine times. So like, when we're looking at the Station Two and the Station Three areas, the areas where we're having, we have career staffing, we're hitting those numbers, we're doing good in there. The rural areas, when we start seeing five, five hundred people or less, that they give you a little bit more time because obviously it's more spread out, that those we should have six people on every call and fourteen minutes response time. And those are the numbers we're not hitting. Um, the remote areas, that one would be Eaton Beach and No Law Right there, they, they don't give us an exact number on how, how fast we've gotta get there. It's just saying that the travel distance is greater than eight miles. They said they want us to have four people there, and they understand that when you're having to travel a great distance, um, that it's gonna take more time to get there.
You don't have to take another week, do you?
We do, it's a volunteer staffing, we have two volunteers. Um, but like, it'd be, because it's so far out from our page, I mean, we've created with the Station One crew as part of the distance wise. Um, even with our two volunteers there, our response times are still, actually, last year, I averaged over twenty-six minutes. And that gives you your road time, your drive, your travel time to get, in miles, so from one to Station Four in Eaton Beach, it's about, we have to drive. Fire truck can only go sixty-five mile an hour. So like in terms, Black L.A., we can only do sixty-five, because that's the truck that governs that route. And then to give you some idea of the other stations, from Station One at, at the airport, St. Hasty is thirty-five miles door-to-door, and then to K-Roe is sixty miles. Any questions on those numbers?
Man, if you have a, a fire station at, at fourteen, St. Hasty, in the base front, just like a six minute, you say in St. Hasty, it could be nine minutes.
It's, well, it's, the state grant, we already put on at Eaton Beach Station, because the numbers that we're seeing here are the core. We don't like to, because we, we just, we just got that person hired and we're ready to open the doors there for career staffing. So next year, we'll have, we'll have new numbers to show our response time. Um, with that, with that, um, position, having that Monday to Friday, we're expecting to see that District Six, to continually, Stations Two and Three, that will have a much lower response time, when it's staff. But after hours on the weekend, we're gonna go back to the high number.
Well, a question I got, uh, if you had a, a station halfway between St. Hasty to the base, it would, it would cut you down, because it, it can be in half.
The problem we would run into is that, you're saying in additional station, or add that one to replace two stations?
Full-time station halfway between the two, somebody there, twenty-four seven. That would stretch the time to Eaton Beach and St. Hasty, give about twenty, come out in time, and it would be...
But what you, what we would see there, like District Seven right now, our average response time last, our last year was six minutes, we're gonna take that six minutes and we're gonna double. If we were to move them out of St. Hasty to halfway. And then the same thing with Eaton Beach, where we have that station now, if we move them halfway in the middle, what we're gonna see, the new numbers for this year, those numbers would go up. We would take, we would be taking away a little.
But the station you got Eaton Beach, it's not full-time man station.
No, sir, it's Monday to Friday.
Yes, that's right, you know, and most of these people down on the weekend, that's where Eaton Beach would be most. I'm just, I'm thinking of a question about, you know, the St. Hasty fire department and the base fire department, if you had a real nice station, twenty-four seven station halfway between, you know, if we just, if, if...
Well, the other problem with doing that too, is if we go back and look at the ISO, stuff that we talked about, talked about in the past for insurance, and how it affects people on the homeowners. If we remove that station from St. Hasty or Eaton Beach, especially St. Hasty, um, where those people are currently getting an ISO class five, they could...
Well, that's a question.
It would greatly up there.
Right.
So, it would, it would give you a middle point where we could consolidate resources in the middle, but everybody with homeowners insurance would probably not like it. I know I would.
Everybody may be, you're, they feel, it's not, I mean, it's a...
If anybody that's within five miles of a fire station, a thousand feet from a fire hydrant, get a class five ISO. Um, if they're within five miles of a fire station and no hydrant, it still get a class nine, and we're working to improve that. Um, but like, if you don't meet either one of those, you'd be go straight to a class ten, which basically means you don't have a fire problem, as far as insurance goes.
But if there's nobody there on the weekend, you have to come all the way from, from the airport to Eaton Beach, or St. Hasty to Eaton Beach, you, you still twenty-five minutes.
Which is what we're doing now. Because the Monday to Friday, Friday position, by utilizing the state grant, state of the, of county money, with a step in the right direction, um, to try to offset where our volunteers aren't there.
I just wanted to clear that question.
What's the ISO rating in the base? Figure out. Um, countywide, we're a five nine. So like, if you're within five miles of a fire station, and a thousand feet from a water supply hydrant, you're a five five.
The water hydrant, that, the base, well, five, you're...
Yeah, but, um, when you start getting up, like, either outside of our town, I believe there, they get, start getting outside of the five miles to a fire station.
Yeah, I had a claim about that.
I said, the problem is, and it's nothing we, we control, that, now, if I, that, that insurance company, and we just take four. Like, that, that's the big one, there's five, five miles from a fire, fire station, for a thousand, a thousand people on water supply.
But for Bird Island, coming all, I thought it was from Bird Island to Station Eaton Beach.
I had to look that up.
No, it's going about a mile, it's way more than about a mile, it's about, almost ten miles, but, yeah, and, and red gate. From Bird Island to the station, where that station repurposed?
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Um, much as just that, as you like, at the end, we'll go through the plan that we addressed these numbers and, and how, how, I would be guessing, without issue with. Now, there are a few, how, what, uh, uh, Eaton Beach, watch this. Is the water pressure there adequate? It's not a problem with the pressure, it's a problem with the tank size. Their max, max capacity for Eaton Beach water system, ten thousand gallons. Over in our fire room, it's probably ninety, at least ninety-five gallons a day, so.
So they won't last long.
And we use them for refilling tanks. Uh, in the Eaton Beach area, we will do a grass water out of Gulf before we would use the type of water, Gulf Water, that I can, I can spray out there with that.
We're using that saltwater out, out of the Gulf.
The, um, it's all stainless steel bronze, and then you go to that, we don't, they're, they're built for it.
No, we're okay.
No, I said, what, by the time you, you use it, and the amount of time here before we get back and flush it out, is the fresh water, or...
By having that water that flows, with Eaton Beach, and like that, anything, right, there, or something?
Only way it does is if we can establish, um, drafting point here. Or we can say that there's a, a well, or, uh, an area that we can draft it out of, and we have to go through and show that it meets a hundred-year flood survey, and... So there's, there are a few areas that we've identified that we can say, if somebody did, you know, kinda use this, that yes, this council has a higher, just because I have a place that I can pull up and reach for the water. Um, so that helps with their insurance. Um, but once again, but we go back to where the stations, and where do we have the man to, to get there and actually utilize it. Um, we're going past the times and how, you know, and what we need to meet there. Next one, I'll give you a breakdown of what we, uh, what we currently see on our personnel by station. Station One is our pay station at the airport, we have one lieutenant, a fire officer, and two career firefighters on a day. Somebody called out Saquon Van, with, that can off there, one firefighter. Station Two, we have four active volunteer firefighters, uh, Steve Tate off of Kenny Maddox. Station Three is off of Johnson Strickland, we have four active volunteer firefighters. Station Four, Eaton Beach, we have two active volunteer firefighters. Station Six, Eaton Beach, we have one active volunteer, and we have one person, one career person hired on from Monday to Friday. Station Seven has one career firefighter, twenty-four seven, and Station Road has three active volunteer firefighters.
Where's Seven now?
Uh, Seven's in Hasty. Okay, and that's the station where that, there are no volunteers to back them off, thirty-five miles away, so if he has to start a fire, it takes a, drive, drive time for thirty-five miles to get there. One, you see, is in their own room. Fortunately, we're, our firefighters are trained very well, and tell them not to slip themselves in any kind of situation, but fortunately, firefighters are also firefighters, they slip themselves in situations, it could be illegal, safe life.
You have a staff of how many?
Currently, we have fourteen kind of stuff.
Fourteen, please.
That's, um, the three shifts we have. On a twenty-four-hour basis, we have three shifts with four on a day, and then myself and Marla are on it for Friday firefighters. So any given day, Monday to Friday, with me and that, and Eaton Beach position, we have four firefighters plus fifteen, uh, Monday to Friday. Now, as we go into the personnel staffing, the next thing we wanna talk about is the fire inspection requirements, which we talked about in the past, um, but it's, it's part of the, the plan to improve. So I wanna give you a little more information on that, because there are two statutes that require that we keep a fire inspector on, and administrative code that requires that we be, we should be doing it annually, uh, for all commercial businesses and unincorporated counties. Um, there, it says at the bottom, we're not, it's not being conducted for mandatory staffing, we are conducting fire inspections. We utilize, uh, our lieutenants, we even send them through the training so they can go out and do some, um, but we, you know, we look at, and we go through all the business tax receipts in the county, there's a little over eight hundred business tax receipts. We don't do eight hundred fire inspections because some of them are charcoal caps and sort of things like that. Uh, but we've identified that we're looking at about a hundred, a hundred-plus businesses that need fire inspections annually. And that doesn't count new businesses, planned review, items like that, so that's all.
So do you think so, they're trying to do that, now, could you do it?
Yes, we, um, we know, we, in the past, we've had two or three that are all licensed that were certified, and so now, the day left, we begin the process of training new lieutenants, and putting, putting everybody through to make sure that we can at least do some fire inspections. Where we can work with administration, we're looking at different ways of possibly taking one of our part-time home call firefighter positions, and seeing if we can turn that into a part-time inspector to do something. Um, but the number of fire inspections that we need to do, really, really need a full-time position.
Oh, um, what would, what would you do from getting fourteen people here certified to do that, and divide it up? I mean, have you got fourteen becoming employees, could they all train to be an inspector?
It takes, uh, a little bit, there's six or seven separate classes that have, they have to go through before they can, they can do it. Um, yes, they could, but as soon as they do that, we're taking somebody away from responding to calls. So if you, you know, when, once they begin an inspection, they're there to do the inspection stuff, um, because if not, you have to start all over again, it can take, depending on the size of the business, it can take several hours to inspect one building. So if we do that, with the people that are on shift, then we're looking at saying, we're taking one, one of those few people that we do have to respond countywide, and isolating them for that. Uh, like I said, we do it on a, on a need basis, um, affecting the school, services, stuff like that, when they request them, that's when we, when we, when we usually on, on duty staffing for ourselves.
So you said, um...
But like I said, we, we should be trying to capture a hundred percent of our businesses with an annual fire failure, and we are, we are not covering a hundred percent of that.
Okay, so, just a couple of questions, so, I remember, um, so if you start an inspection, and you have to leave, go sort of fire out, then you can't come back and pick up where you left off, you have to strong over...
You could, but it's, it's kind of a systematic process that you're going through, that you're trying to make sure you're, you're not missing over anything, because, you know, firefighters are what we do when it's too late, or fire, fire inspectors are what we use to prevent fire from ever happening. So like, and it's a systematic approach, if you go through a building, you know, if, if you don't get ready to walk around, if you're going step by step, and if something happens where they move something, and move, you know, not say anybody, whatever, you know, try to...
Oh, I thought you were...
If they, if they mirror, you know, like, if we, if we don't have that thorough process, there's a good chance things like it will...
But now, just administrative code here that requires an annual inspection of businesses, is that like a state code?
Or...
And so do they ever monitor that, and if they do, what happens if they find out that we're not doing that?
Essentially, nothing until that bad call happens, and then, they just might agree with me that if we weren't up to what we needed to be, and a bad call, and a bad fire happened where there was a large loss of life of citizens, then we would be in liability there, where they say, you were supposed to be on the roll, you didn't. There's no, we're not gonna get fined or anything like that if, if we're not doing it, but we are gonna run the risk one day that it puts us, all of us, in a very, very high liability.
And what do you charge the businesses to do there, do they train anything to do?
Um, we drafted an ordinance a few years back when we, when we talked about this for a time, never passed it. Um, what we had put in the draft ordinance was that the initial fire inspections for the annual inspections, there were no calls from us, um, because we're, we're forcing businesses to do it. We didn't want to tell them, you have no choice, and we're gonna charge you for it. Um, where we started, um, occurring calls from them is when we came back second, or third, or fourth time, and they weren't fixing what we told them to fix, then they started getting, getting fined for not taking the wrong... We haven't put the ordinance, the ordinance in practice.
Do you have to go in, some hotel, walk around, and check every room, every area, most tech room and kind of like that?
It was, we, we walked in and made sure they are compliant with the fire, NFPA one and one oh one for the now, or to say, guard. Got that question.
You said that in the, unincorporated area, there are about seventy businesses. And many of that seventy, you would say, is our, over there, Captain...
No, that was part of, of all, when we receive our information, it's the business tax receipt, um, the last one was a little over eight hundred. And then...
How many businesses do you have to inspect?
I'm interested in that. We're going through updating the list, because every year, one is gonna get the newest, we have to go through, but it's about a hundred.
About a hundred businesses.
Certain, including GP, the, the small, the gas station, and that, I mean, it's...
First two, they need to inspect. And I don't know how tech can do an inspection, you can inspect all of under them, don't know you can inspect the full time, huh?
Well, like, when you, when you get into the initial inspection, and every inspection, it requires a follow-up. So when you have that number, a hundred, thirty days later, we're going back to look at it again. To go through the walk-in and say, okay, this is what we told you, let's see, you know, we have to, the follow-up's a lot faster, because you're looking just for the things that they told, that you told them to. And that's saying that they fix it all the same time, they didn't fix it the second time, we're going back the third time, so it gets to compounding on schedule. I said, and we are, we're, we're, we're looking at, they're often currently, of possibly using a part-time person to, you know, see if we can get a part-time person to do better and see where, where we're hitting on that.
But does the city present a payment list, why can't the city have, um, you know, could we share an inspector, or do they do inspector, so that's of the county?
No, they, that, the city would be in their, like, the numbers I've given you are, do not, do not incorporate the city's number. Everything in the unincorporated county.
The city uses the services of our building inspector, and they're, they're in verse. Uh, what is it, you, or what they, they use, and where they're, where they're to catch us? I'm not sure I'm...
Hey, I, I specifically came around this morning and asked him if, if we needed to, if we got in a situation where we needed to pass up these inspections, even if it were short-term, um, would they be willing to enter into some type of agreement that, um, to assist us, and he is pushing us to that for us?
That would be good.
That'd be good, we could make that work. I know the city currently, they use one of their own tech captains as their fire inspector, and that's how they're, how they're meaning their numbers and everything, but one being the difference to them versus us is they're in a ten-square-mile area, so they're not... Oh, yeah, well, yeah, they're not having to go to K-Roe or Kene, and they're, or, you know, St. Hasty, so they're, they're not, it's spread out, you know? So it's similar, but different, same time. Um, so going through this, at the end of the summary, so everything, all the information we got, and there wasn't one, one area that, that says this is where it should be, it's, it's looking at our volunteer staffing, our response times, the number of call volume, everything that we throw, so everything I'm gonna give you over the next, for the five-year plan, this is try to get to where, where we should be staffing-wise to make it, um, more effective. And it's basically a triage of roads for us, like, it's, it's not a, it's not a, a big call of our plan, it's a, let's take, let's help the most amount of people we can as fast as we can. Year one, who gave us the, is this fire marshal, that would be your fire inspector position, um, gives us a second, a second firefighter in Station Seven, and takes the Station Six, Eaton Beach Station from a Monday to Friday position, and gives us twenty-four hour staffing, Eaton Beach. and gives us twenty-four hour staffing heat and heat. Um, the reason these stations were chosen first was because we have the facilities that we can put firefighters and career staffing in those stations right now. Whereas our volunteer staffing, or volunteer stations can't house career staffing right now without doing some modifications. So that's why these, these were put higher than, than the other ones, also because of travel time for that one firefighter by themselves in C N S and for the number of call volumes, uh, that we're paying. Year two gives us the addition of a battalion supervisor. What that's gonna look, look at is as we, if we continued on this, on this plan, and we continue to grow and have firefighters throughout the county, the more boy you have, you need to have supervisors in there. And instead of saying we need to have supervisor in each station with them, we limited that, so we're gonna have one that rolls around the county. So instead of having the cost of a lieutenant at every fire station, we're gonna have one battalion supervisor that, that covers all the stations. And then, the year two, we need to look at the relocation and construction of Station Two, that's the state, um, you know, that, um... Questions on that? Year three, once we, hopefully we would, we would start in Station Two, where we'll have the facilities that we can, we can start staffing again. Um, that's when we would have one firefighter in Station Two to offset the volunteer staffing. Um, the reason we went with Station Two on that one, as opposed to Station A to Station Three, was because it has a, a side, a side effect for all the, all the surrounding districts. So Station Two was, you know, because it would be north of town, we'll cut a ten-minute response time for our State One Truck Office to Cedar Grove. So we would see, where right now, we're looking at eighteen minutes to get to Cedar Grove, we could probably cut ten minutes off of that just by having to truck north of town. So that district's response time would drop down to eight minutes, which would get us under that ten-minute number that we were looking for. Um, and then also for Station Three, we have, we'd be able to respond to the north side off on Station Three to help with that response as well. Year four is when we look at, we, we do, uh, the construction or remodeling of Station A, whichever, once we evaluate and see what we needed. Um, year five, we'd be adding a position on to Station A. Station A is open again, as, as the last one, because it is, when you weigh out all the call volume and everything you look at, that's just a necological choice when you're looking at it. It doesn't help us with our initial response times to see if we know we're right there yet. Um, but what it does give us is our second detractor that would be responding, responding there, then we, that point we're seeing a larger reduction. Um, and then at the end, they just see where I told you that the state board was, state board was to learn through the next fire operational outlook to look at it and reassess the number to see, see where we are, how much our call volume looks like. Um, same thing with, uh, construction of Station, Station Three. Because we would have Station Two right near, we need to look at states that construct, re-construction, remodeling of Station Three further down the road. That, Station Three is a block building, relatively, relatively strong building, if one or better, a volunteer house.
So, like Wood Creek?
Sir?
It's like Wood Creek. Didn't things been done to Wood Creek?
Um, we put a new roof on, so we, we...
Otherwise, it'd still...
Can they matter? That's one of the dirtfall.
And that one in this five-year plan would be relocated, yes, right now, when you go up the pair.
Well, yeah, we would relocate it somewhere, it's already north of the pair now.
Um, probably relocate it out on highway nine.
Yeah, we, we would try to find a better, a better city location for it. Um, and like, right now, we do not own the land that it sits on, so the idea would be to build something on, you know, that we would actually own property. And like I said, that would have attached, the construction for Station Two would have been year two on the plan.
And it has a, should have had a pretty good volunteer base, but...
Four active volunteers.
Four active volunteers.
But there's a few more that are on the roster, but we, we really don't think, we don't consider them active volunteers, they get brought down a little bit. Should still on the roster, just not, we don't see them on, in many calls.
And to come all this up, I may be ahead of them, or ahead of you. But the estimated total operational cost to implement this five-year plan will be a total of one point three billion.
So would be in addition to our, to our current budget?
That's in addition to our current budget.
And that, and that excludes the capital cost of the new, constructing new stations, this operational cost?
It doesn't include the, the new station.
No, like I said, that was, these numbers are operational costs.
It doesn't include any new outright structure and all that.
This report was, was solely based off of the operational staffing.
Operational staff.
And then, like I said, and we discussed in this report, the stations, and which stations need to be looked at with construction, because if we don't do construction on, we can't put a staffing on. Um, so that would, that will report, any question on any of that?
Happy to answer.
Now, we all understand that fire protection is, is, is people. And people are never gonna need that, being, not, I won't say, not met, but not met.
We can do that.
High expectations. We have to balance that with the fact that we're a small county, we have twenty, twenty-three thousand people and did not reach somewhere where population's going down a little bit. Uh, the plan that you laid out, I think would fit. A county like Texas County where you got a lot of growth coming, you know, they were one twenty-two thousand people. Now they're coming sixty-eight thousand. Uh, it's good to have a plan, and we want to kind of implement it, if we can afford it. But no, no, we need to balance and commit to the plan of this magnitude at this time.
And so maybe, the, um, by leaving this plan the way we did, we, we understand that there's no large difference. This will be done on this date. That's why we tried to stage it out, saying, the, the reason we did year one, you know, we can call it phase one. It doesn't have to be done in the first, second, third year. It just gives us a plan of action moving forward. So if year two, there's no money to have a position?
There's years.
Then, you know, we, then we move in, you know, we, like I said, it, it, to, this is just to give, give some guidance to say that as we move forward, we can, you know, by, by adding the six, seven, station six positions, that's the most bang for the buck. If we're making, we have the money to spend it on that one, or in the, in fire inspection. Um, Station Two, that's the most bang for the buck as we move forward. Um, so we, we, we put them in that order, so this way, as we have the ability to put, put, put these in order, or put these in place, we've got a logical choice going, you know, and you came over, and see, what, what should we do next?
We've got that on.
This is what we should have.
I like that phase one, phase two, rather than year one, in that, you might say, year two, year one, phase, uh, three.
You know, and then the other thing is, like I said, if year two, year one, we call it phase one, phase two. If, if we only get phase one, phase one is not a daily difference from where we are now. If we had, if we had a fire inspector, we're, we're an amazingly forward. If we had one more firefighter that's been happy, we're amazingly forward. Um, and if, any, any improvement in our staffing, great. You know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not standing here telling you, we need thirty, thirty people and I have to have today, I love it. But if I get one, it's all in my next stack.
Do you have a cost estimate, uh, for each year or each thing?
Um, well...
I mean, I mean, we've got a total here, but do you have any ideas?
Well, the first note call, we usually say, we, we look at, by the time I hire three firefighters for one position, about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. So plus, if you go up and you say, can utility calls, your calls definitely start going up. Um, so year, if year two, you'd be looking at someone in a hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred thousand dollar range. Year three, same.
Year one?
Year one...
That's a excellent.
Yes, man, um, four, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm good. Off the top of my head.
You want to ask a question later when you have more time?
Yeah, like I said, now that's just a guess.
That would be listed there.
Yeah, but, um, you know, like I said, and that can, that can get those numbers for you.
Yeah.
And then, I can't give you a number, I'm not telling you the lie.
Yeah, you're so right.
Um, so with that concluded, the next step was the, during the workshop, we were discussing the fire assessment to move forward, and we can't take action in our workshop, whatever you say, we'll keep it a day if you make, whether or not the board would choose to continue with the action or not. Um, we just couldn't make that decision during the workshop. And I would also remind the board that going forward, that if you see something in this plan, if we move forward, even if you choose against the fire assessment, and pursue the fire assessment today, we could still look at, and we all know we're coming into budget workshop, but we have to start that whole process. Um, you know, we could include some part of this in, in that, um, so the, the fire assessment isn't the only way that we can start seeing it.
Right.
So we, the fire assessment is just an option for the board.
I would definitely want to, uh, you know, find some way to start some of this, like you say. If you put one of us being happy, I mean, each step is a big step. Um, I understand the need, um, you know, what we have in terms of, you know, making our county and our citizens, making our citizens safe. Um, as far as the assessment, um, what is the pressure for it, I thought?
I'm not sure, I'm not even...
Sure. Um, does anybody have any, um, some commitment to it?
Is anybody out there that ought to come up with the money without a firefighter? Yeah, I...
The one cent tax, self-tax would be all the time.
The one cent tax, that would have to vote all the time.
Yes, with the, uh...
With it, and I have, uh, I've spoken to one of the candidates, or our representative, and said, we may, we could call on you if you're elected. Just see if you can give us the authority in the county to vote those people. We have to make a one cent sales tax. And part of that could fund some fire. I would not support a one cent additional sales tax if people voted on it unless we include it in the hospital. It's part of that, that you all have need, it's just as important to this community as fire. We've got multiple needs. So I'm not tonight in favor of, of voting for a, a fire assessment. Because you shift all the burden of the injuries off, on, on the homeowners of the county. I would love to, to, to don't pay any taxes at all, pay a little bit, but then get into the hybrid method. And when I'm sure we can use the select, if you get a tax bill, and see if your fire assessment is a hundred dollars, we might not even ever get that hundred dollars, it's all bad. So it's, it's tough to do. But the, all the other options, if we're gonna generate additional funding, is increase the business in the M S P to use funds. And that's a, that's a bitter pill to swallow. Uh, we need, we gotta do something in the first year. This is two thousand nineteen, and then the two thousand twenty election will be up, and then maybe we'll get the one cent tax. But this next year is not worried about. We maybe could contract with the city for the fire inspection part of it. In bed, I hate to do it, hold on, I'll hire a new firefighter, and see what happens. If people vote on the one cent tax, if we can get our legislature to give us the authority to put that on the ballot. So I haven't really come to any conclusion except that I can't vote for a, as long as fire, that's, that's the time.
Anybody else?
I can't either. I'm, I'm in that form of, I can't, I could, I could go with the one cent tax if it hasn't, if it's actually split between fire departments and hospitals.
And hospitals.
And that's the only way I would be along with the one cent tax.
I, I would do that, if it's split, between the two.
Well, the two don't get that as long as a fire does.
Right.
That's me.
Thank you, there, uh, now, the one that, the, the, uh, one that we have now. Have we ever officially voted on how it's gonna be used?
I believe, yes, we did.
And you remember the percentage and, and what it was to? Was it the percentage that was gonna be earmarked the business, the percentage for that, not as far as I know?
That's not capital item writing, that's just the prior ministrators.
Exactly, yeah.
It is a suggestion, but now there was an ordinance, I think, that we passed.
For the hospital, wasn't it?
Now, that one cent, a out rest, and then the city is part of it. Well, the city is part of it, but the county's part of that. Now, it gets an ordinance, I'll correct me. It says that it has to be spent on capital on the need. Now, I remember Bill Bryan was here, and he spoke up. If you, our likely, we had to look at, the time wasn't even spent on anything. Operations and needs, and said, if you don't tie it down to capital on the need, everyone leaves elected. The officials are gonna be up there all on the news, whatever.
They have capital infrastructure.
But now, ordinance can't be changed.
But I mean, that's a change of way to organize it, because it's earmarked, the council only includes us. Now, I agree with that still.
Well, I, I, I agree with it to some extent, but if, if the argument says that we're gonna use some of that, and it helps fire, he needs personnel rather than capital, didn't he?
But he can't use the personnel.
But he can't use that, unless it came to order.
Well, the resolution was one cent sale tax for the hospital, whether or not, was it that way?
It was the original.
There really, there really, there really was.
Yeah, and the city gave up their portion of the one cent when they built the new hospital.
Built the hospital.
And when that comes there, and it was back to the, I think, forty, forty...
Seventy, thirty?
Seventy, thirty, whatever. The city gets their part, and the county gets their part.
Now, out of that seventy percent that we get, all this, what used to be the hospital, one cent sale tax. We're, we can only use that for capital spending where it is now.
But could that be, could some merit offset something else, so that then there would be?
Um, well, we're already doing that though, because it's...
Is there any other opportunity?
Well, the state's, it's the fire track lease is being paid for from that one cent funding. So we use our one cent sales tax money to help balance some of our other funds for the capital, to try to free up, uh, the, to make sure we didn't stiffen the reserves for those funds. So we are being somewhat creative with our, our one cent funding at this point.
Well, what if we, if the ordinance will change and, and, and settle it, and, and make it specific to being able to help fund the, uh, fire department? And, and limit it to that one department, not opening it up to everybody? Is that something that could be done?
I, I was thinking about it, you know, you know, remember now, twenty-five percent of that money was allocated for the share, but that was, that was allocated for the share capital needs.
Yes.
We didn't formalize it, but we're using part of that for capital needs and entire funding. And what I would say, let's take ten percent of the one cent sales tax and loosen it up so it can be spent for operations, or capital, or whatever we want to choose, and allocate that to the fire department. That'd be a question that, that's been, been researched, and researched that.
It's, it's like, that's something from the, that the state requires, that the discretionary sales tax be used on interest, on capital. Now, I do know there's continued legislatures... Now, I do know there's continued legislatures that would allow, if it's a pass, that would allow us to use some of those, um, for operational needs, but I don't know for those.
That's why you wanted the special act for Taylor, and I need to...
Well, I think where the chair comes from, not speaking for her, is we're trying to figure out a way to, for one year, create a law to help out.
Oh, that's a new year, just a basic one.
Until we can get this thing on the ballot.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I don't want to say know everything, because I understand the need.
Just for the fire department, we appreciate everything. Um, I know it seems like I come aboard and complain a lot, but, uh, that's, that's not the intent, like, we are very appreciative of everything the board does and works on. We've got, we've talked about it, we don't, we don't forget those things, like, we just, we're asking, you know, as, as we before, that there are still more needs, like, to it. It, it's not, it's not the thing like we're, we're ungrateful for anything that we've already got.
Well, well, instead of that, excuse me. I, I understand you, and I appreciate what you see. And I think most of our employees feel the same way. It is not nothing personal with us, that's just the effort. And it's, the money's not wasted. Now, if there's any way we can have, we have wiggle room to help you out with this first year, or just add one person to you. Hey, I, I'm bothered. Any way, any thing we can do for you. And I see ninety percent, about ninety-nine percent of our people, or appreciate everything we do.
I appreciate you doing so much with so little. Uh, but if we could work it with a city on the inspector, in at least four, five, to help out, and then try to get him, uh...
I don't get some here, but...
Yeah, and then try to get people under the farm market.
And the other options that we look at are, once we get those people certified, instead of using them on, on duty, is bring them, bring them in off shift for overtime. You know, you're only gonna get, we have the one coming so much after a lot of overtime vehicles. Um, but, you know, that's another option, where instead of having them where you have to use them, using them off, off shift, you know, give them most time, or, or using, like, our, and we are internally looking at other options to try, to try to do better than we, than we currently are. Uh, we're not, we're not just, you know, sitting there and just saying, oh, why don't I have them? Um, so like, we, we are actively looking at, at different channels that we can, we have to go, go forward. Um, but we think that those, that everything that we need, that ultimately is needed to the full-time position, but like, we're, we are, we are actively working and trying to improve those numbers, that, you know, with what we already have. So like, we are taking action on that now.
You're a good part of these, and I appreciate you thinking out of the law, you do that, and I'm, I'm willing to appreciate what you do. So what, what, what we want to do, and what can we do?
I think we just need direction, maybe if the board approved, uh, uh, a resolution of intent for the fire assessment. Um, and that's where we are.
Yeah.
So, um, we're, staff, I would say, is reluctant to move forward, um, with any cost or any, no, effort, if the board's intention is not to move forward. But it's, it's, it's your fault.
But I, what I'm hearing here again tonight is that, that we don't have a board that's willing to, uh, go with the fire assessment. But I think we can take that off the table. I think that's there, from what...
I respect my thoughts, for any reason.
From what, from what everybody said, I, I think we have to look at other avenues. And that's what we're, we're talking about, looking at other ways, you know, if, if, if we could get more self-tax money, I like that idea, because everybody, uh, contributes there. But, you know, if you even run up on the, uh, on the, uh, um, have a long patent on the middle age, then still, it's a homeowner, still paying the bills.
Well...
It's not spread out like the self-tax.
No, if you grow up on the middle age, there are many, many, many homeowners that don't pay any tax, because they have home security. So they don't pay enough. And so what's, what's happening now is they're not paying enough for property. And the big payers go to Pacifics, to do some of these water gas and emissions, to truck county electric, to see how it more easily to do. Companies that pay the bulk of taxes, that pay the bulk of the increase, the taxes. And those folks that have home security, the house worth more than, than, you know, they forget taxes. So, uh, we have to do this. And the people that took in, tried in, how they get in, do they get some tax pay, or do they get some just?
They get it from their cover.
Cover, so if you, if you're not doing from that alone, you're doing the sales tax. And everybody is considering the compromise.
Well, everybody, everybody pays the life bill. So everybody is paying more on his electric bill, so they can pay their tax bill, so they are paying them. And that's it. Good point.
I, uh, know it. Now, we accept, we have got to make assessments, and that means we have to go forward with anything, or just...
I, I think that, now, if I'm right, you might need to help me, you have a resolution of intent kind of sitting out there.
Yeah, I'm excited, I'm excited, I'm not gonna do it.
We're not gonna do it.
Do we need a vote, do you?
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Do you wanna make a motion not to do the fire assessment?
Yeah, I'm in.
Okay, we got a motion, let's move through here.
I'll say it.
And we got a second by permission to move any further discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries.
Got that over there. We'll get a time out.
But we still have to figure out how we build, oh, this, I would say this should be for next...
This is from budget stuff, yeah.
Which is going to be here before we know it, so maybe we, we can work on it and, and just see where, where it falls out at the end, we'll do our budget prep and go from there.
One thing, I know a part of something we all read in a paper that Bob Mayberry passed away, and you know that Bob Mayberry did, he was a guru for taxes. Um, and I don't know whether this firm will continue on, but I assume that they were, that they have. You may, that firm may be someone who I can make a phone call and see what they think about the various options. You know, I don't know who took Bob's place, but, I mean, I've said he's written books, and I think, you know, it's, you know, it's around.
Thank you, I'll be in order, we have a guest here from out of town, she's up here, twenty-eight, did you move that up for her? She's, uh, staying in Chelsea, but at, at she's school, I don't know, working on projects for, she's a friend of Davis County, but that, then, oh, I'd like to see you do that. But, she's been here all night. They got some time.
Okay.
What number is that?
It's twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
I know she's been joining me, God.
Yeah, it's very informative. I think, hope we're done with, uh, twenty-four, and we got to twenty-eight. The board should consider adoption of a resolution of support recommending Project Code to be approved as a qualified target industry business that was given by the P C D A U S. Okay, is there a motion to read the resolution about homeowners?
No, no, we need to, okay, I'm...
We got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, and a second by Mr. Moody, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries, Mr. Bishop.
A resolution by the governing board of Prairie County Water Recommending Project Code is approved as a qualified target industry business pursuant to section two eight eight point one oh six, part three, that the site of this project is presumed to be a rural area requesting a waiver of local financial support provided from the statute.
Any discussion? Okay, if not, is there a motion to adopt this...
I would discuss.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I know that this Project Code was in a rural area, I mean, I've heard of a Project Code.
It's a code name?
It's a code name?
Yes, it is. It's common.
And it sure means that this, you know, in a rural area?
Yes.
Well, I have a secret.
Well, it's not secretive, it's confidential project as long as, as not yet announced. And they're scrutinized both by Empire Florida, I say A Street, as well as Department of Energy and Department of Transit.
It's not unusual for them to have a code name just to protect themselves.
I understand. Yeah, I, I, I believe it's transparent. But in certain situations, certain things have to be, and I appreciate that. But, uh, if it's gotta be any code, it's a code. There's no big secret, I don't think. You know, small town, you can find out.
Yeah, but I understand more than small town.
But anyway, you, this thing is ripe for approval.
Yes.
And it's no cost to the county.
Actually, this reduces by twenty percent what they will receive, because it's a business, then the county would pay twenty percent. But this, this allows counties, because you're a, a rural county, you're eligible to weigh that, and most rural counties do.
They shouldn't be enough just to impact what's going to be.
Yeah.
Yes.
I appreciate it. You could have raised the fence right there, you probably would have been like, no, you gotta go back to post that door now.
Yep.
But I think, if I could come in there, or whatever you used to go, and I saw it down at Keith's, I must say, when he was going down. Do what you can for it.
I would.
See you later, friends. Right.
Is, is there, are there any other questions?
No, or what? Um, moving with two resolutions.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Moody, in front of discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Thank you for your patience of patience.
What happened, I didn't hear it on the way out.
Thank you for being here, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I've got to go get my umbrella.
Thank you all for...
I appreciate you going to the floor.
Okay, okay, um, okay, I believe we're at twenty-four a. The board should consider approval of invitation to bid and watch right up this one for the rehabilitation of one home and, of one home demolition and construction of three homes through the ship program. And the demolition and construction of three homes, which is a big, significant deal program, but then we got to grant one name. And what I, when I read your law, it's, for the ship rehabilitation, there's one person, I think it's Probagel, put at one one two Layla Street. And then for ship demolition and construction, there's Caitlin Holmes at one seventeen Kipper Drive, Laura Campbell at two oh eight Timber Street, Thomas Nixon at thirteen oh seven South Farah Street. And then for the C B B G demolition and construction is Darrell Foster at forty-six hundred Saltman Circle, James O'Neil at one five seven five one Reed Drive, and William W. Davis at one one six eight zero Frank Warrior Road. Those are the candidates, and, um, I think we need to declare now the related law start, I'm not related to any of these folks.
I'm not related, I'm not related, I'm not related.
Okay. Um, now, we need a motion to approve.
I'm in, I'll say it.
We got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Moody, in front of discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. General Bishop, number twenty-five, the board should consider appointment of one member to the County County Board as presented by Danny Griner, county building official. The only person that responded was Sally Roberts.
Motion to appoint Sally Roberts, as a county planning board, say it.
We got a motion of second in front of discussion, if not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same time, motion carries, number twenty-six, the board should consider appointment of a real appointment of two members to the construction industry lobbying board as presented by county building officials. We have, um, Sheriff Paul Padgett and Dale Ronald, the term expired on three thirty-one nineteen. We have one other applicant, Eugene Harden. Now, do the two that were on there, uh, the sheriff and Dale, do they wish to remain on the table? Okay. So the way you do this, I don't know, put a one by your first choice, two by your second choice, and three by your third choice, and it will pass them down to Mr. Bishop.
There you go.
And I'd like to say that this is public record, so at any time, anybody wants to look at how we voted, uh, that that is the public record, and they can look at it after this meeting, or anytime they can go see a clerk over at the courthouse. And while that's being touted, um, what I'd like to do is go on to, um, to number twenty-seven. The board should consider appointment of two members to the County Development Authority, P C D A Board, as the given on Scott Brooks' director. Time process.
I need to tell it.
The case not being ruled yet.
Now, I don't know, that's the question, with Mark Lee. Now, we voted as a board's commission to increase the membership of the P C D A board from seven up to nine. Well, I remember that a little bit. So by all the P C D As, I understand them, the, still, that they'll be in seven member board. You see any conflict with this, or we'll do it in the next session? Now, again, my question is, do you... Should they, uh, up there, buy all, you wouldn't want her?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to table this, a little later date?
I would think that would be a proper thing to do.
Are you a P C D A more?
I'd do that, I'd like to...
Y'all can operate, you know, we can all get your buy all, see that?
Well, I could talk about that to Chairman, maybe that, I can't offer, you know, uh, that, that they need to do, I believe.
So what happened here, I don't remember, was it was the P C D A board, which, um, I was there, when they discussed it, they wanted to increase their members, because they were having a hard time with the four. So, I, I don't quite understand it, if you increase by two, then you...
Well, hey, you know, that, that whole world is...
You don't have to have a percentage.
Well, it's a buy all, that's the number of members that's being requested, and the buy all, that's all that.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, we already, that's that, that's how it came about.
Right.
They asked for it, and we agreed with it to help them out, and, but, what happened is, is that the buy all, their, their buy all will never change.
So, like, that's, we just need to have a workshop, and let's take the buy all, then y'all move on.
Then we can point.
That works, y'all, that's not...
I'm, 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 I take space for taking the air, but I know, that's, that's...
Well, I'm, 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 I'm...
Okay, so, I, I personally said we should, uh, table this, so let's table this, if that's okay?
Do I agree?
And, uh, we need to come back, let the, uh, P C D A know that they need to, um, revisit their buy all, and they need to be the same as what we agreed to.
I, I'd like to keep the same list without... I- I'd like to keep the same list without them. Is there any additional line you wanna add, Doug, or?
This one's not signed, this is not for two votes, who didn't sign it?
Well, I'm not, yeah.
I didn't. Well, you need to sign, sir.
Okay.
There you go. Now, I need- I need to move into it.
And we should all table this, and we'll wait on P P D As to upgrade their buy offs, and then if anybody else wants to, should know.
Okay.
Is this for the, um...
Well, not for the...
P P D As?
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, let's be clear. If anybody else wants to put their name on, I just, I can... Maybe the mayor will look here.
Do we need a hug? The second?
Oh, is that what we need?
Do we need a hug, the second is not?
You know what, I just put on there, the public title, yeah.
Do you like that? Boy. Okay. So, you're, uh, is the, uh...
Okay, we have a law, this is what we, that we want to consider it, but the confirmation declaring A law, there's water concentration map in Taylor County as a pressure box, and we want management to...
I'm gonna go ahead and give you a description of the...
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, uh, day on the line.
Day on the line.
No, she has a good tone.
Now, with the confirmation, um, is there a motion to read the pro- confirmation?
Motion to read, the chair, the second.
We've got a motion in a second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yes, ma'am. Can I see the date, okay, this is the, uh, the, um, dates are corrected, from what's been in my package.
And the name?
My patient, Taylor County, Florida, where water is the basic and essential need of every living creature. We agree with that. And whereas the state of Florida Water Management District and Taylor County are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas Taylor County and state of Florida have designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate residents about how they can help save water, precious water resources. And whereas Taylor County encourages support water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every citizen, industry, school, and resident can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. And whereas every business, industry, school, and resident can help by saving water, and thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now, there are four, via resolve by the board council commissioners in Taylor County, Florida, this first day of April two thousand nineteen, that we hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month, and call upon each resident, visitor, and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Move.
A proper way.
No, this, uh...
And motion by Commissioner, um, yeah?
Correct.
Second Lieutenant Page, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
You need to sign?
Yes, everybody needs to sign. Got the place for everybody to sign.
Uh, this one, no more, no.
Okay.
There you go.
You want this one signed?
Yeah, that one's got the correct, better on it.
Okay.
So, the gall of the team will be on the front of the ballot. Okay. I just didn't wanna get a mixed, uh...
Okay, County Administrator, on, number three, the board should consider approval or agreement with Board of Representatives, that D O T can locate signage along each of the major highways that offer recognition of the Manger Bluff accomplishment, and to approve studies on tourism, infrastructure, speaking rights, and to approve the subject. County Administrator.
Good evening. So, um, just a year ago, the board approved a resolution to, requesting that F D O T place signage to honor three-time NFL Super Bowls in Manger Bluff. And it has taken us a year to get to this point, where we have an agreement with the D O T that enables us to place buy signs, um, in D A T rightways at each entrance into Taylor County. Um, and we will need more approval for that agreement. Now, um, as we lead through the process, it became clear that D A T would not pay for these signs. And our gross estimate for each sign is around four hundred dollars. Um, so I'm asking for funding, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. And originally, we had thought that, um, the reserves for, um, bed tax funding would be a good place to get these signs. But since then, I have realized that we actually have a line item in our Public Works Department budget, um, expressly for signage, and there's a fifteen thousand dollar balance in that line item. So instead of asking for a transfer from reserves, I'm just asking that we, you know, pull the funding from the appropriate line item and just afford that to the agreement.
Okay, we might cut that.
Yes, now, I'll make it. I'll make it. And I- I- I know we spent a lot of money on it. Doing shared budgets and all this. And if we can just pay two or three people, uh, and we spend a lot of money on recreation, and we add a bunch of product of our local recreational, it would, I think it would mean so much to know that any kid who's coming into town, who's in there, you know, you know, young children went through the tables out of recreation, you can do well. You know, and that might be an incentive for them to do that. You know, a specific small amount of money for incentive. Because you keep my dad telling me, "Yeah, I don't know what it costs, a hundred dollars a bag, two hundred dollars a bag, he brought it more."
I'm thinking, yeah, you must take it for that.
And after a month, you know, you couldn't expect that, so...
I agree, didn't you?
I agree.
Sure does.
You're making both of the dollars, I'll make the money.
Your vote is through the agreement and the legislature's vote, and how the, on the, on top of that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, Lieutenant Kemp, Second Lieutenant Page, any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. So, we want the County Administrator to discuss informational items.
I'm happy to announce that last week, last Monday, we hired our personnel manager. Um, her name is Frankie Rouse. Uh, she has been enjoyed, uh, the last week. She brings forth, um, several years of experience with personnel and accounting. And we worked, she was actually our account representative for inmate medical at Doctor's Memorial Hospital, and was always very pleasant, um, helped us out a great deal. So we're very happy to have her on board.
Well, we have to get her in.
I'm better, very nice, very nice, bro. Good to talk.
Thank you. Um, last week, I attended a Restore Act Adult Consortium meeting. Um, and I'm happy to say that first set of bundled applications were submitted to Adult Consortium. Um, there was a lot of discussion regarding the handling of these bundled grant applications. And if you'll recall, it was our recommendation that we use this bundling process to, for our grant applications for capability studies and, um, engineering and design. So, um, we did not make the end of March deadline for that first set of applications. But I will say that, um, actually, a little bit relieved, that was the first set that, um, was submitted. I'm sure there was going to be a little bit of a learning curve. So, we're happy to wait and see how- how that goes with those applications. And we're working on these grant applications for feasibility studies now. Um, now, I also made contact with F D C regarding the public-public partnership, um, with Enfer Hagan Post. And I- I met with the F W C representative after the meeting last week. And I will say we have some concerns about permitting, uh, about preventing dredging, and, um, the potential environmental impact. So, um, he had placed a committee that he would reach out to D E P on our behalf, and see if he could get some feedback from them as about permitting. Um, from what I understand, the original committee decided they knew it would be an uphill battle. But I think we should have some type of idea of how uphill the battle is, um, for all of our projects, not just, not just Hagan Post. And see if we can get some type of idea of what D E P, um, is, how they would be willing to work with us, if there's a way for mitigation, or exactly where we stand. So I'm waiting on a call back from the F D C representative, and to, um, just to get some ideas from them. Um, they're very willing to help, um, but this will set the tone for us, I believe.
And if you're looking history, of, um, what other people have gone through to attempt to, uh, dredge, um, you know, what they went through, I- I hope that, that they want with us, but if they don't, it's like you said, not just Hagan Post, it would be all of the submissions.
That would be my concern.
Because on all of them, everyone that was submitted would have to have dredging in order to accommodate our needs. So, um, we just hope that it can be worked out, but...
But it's all okay. I mean, if we have to, if we have to amend our state expenditure plan project, we can do that, you know? Um, I would just rather know early on, you know, what we're facing. And we actually, um, did find out that F W C has a long-term agreement with Dixie County, um, for Rocky Creek Program.
Mm.
Um, so we were able to find that agreement. But the difference is, is any dredging there was not through seagrass. So, that's, I feel like is, um, is what we'll need to overcome, and at least get to my idea of what's going to happen. Now, it's possible that, that I'm sure the feasibility studies would identify any potential issues with permitting. But I will say that my initial conversation with, um, the gentleman I spoke with last week at F D C was that permitting would be quite challenging.
So, is it proper to give feasibility studies knowing that what they're saying?
I would say it depends on what type of answer we receive from D E P.
Will he do anything?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what I'm looking for, is some type of indication, if- if he, if D E P is willing to give us an answer, um, then we, I think we'll have a better idea of what we need to do with the, with the court.
It's gonna be a challenge. It's like a long time, but... I wish there was some way to mitigate. Anyway, you know, the beginning, right? Because you can't dredge anywhere. Sure, it's in the seagrass. Then we won't be, or have another...
What we have?
...large seagrass. Yeah.
That's my concern.
And my concern is we have to do the S D C part over and send it, or some other person.
And that's okay, we can do that.
We can do that.
We can do that. I- I don't want to convey that I'm concerned that we won't receive our funding. Um, I would rather have, if we can receive a temporary permit, maybe from some of these agencies, um, about any type, any possibility of dredging, then I just think we'll know going into it what we're thinking. And then you can make a decision if you're willing to, to do that or not.
Do you think that, um, any kind of input from elected officials or public, calls, letters, would that, would that help, do you think, or would that make it bad, or?
Well, I would say what we can do is after we receive some type of preliminary, um, feedback from D E P, and, you know, Army Corps and some of the other agencies, then at that point, we can make a dis- or you can make a decision, if we should reach out to Board of Representatives of counties, or legislators, or, you know, what our, what our plan is. I just think that we're at a point in the process where it would be helpful for us to have some type of indication, if possible, um, to fix that to some of our projects.
Now, there is one area, Mount Spill Hollow River, that's, that's no seagrass, not part of the seagrass reserve.
Right.
Is it?
I don't know.
It's like, like off the front there, where what you're seeing there.
Well, at, at Mount Spill Hollow, there's seagrasses in the...
That was not right.
The ideal question, my opinion, was about random, that would be a...
Yeah, and that might be...
Yeah, and the map there now, because I have to go explore that.
I- I don't know, you know, who will look at.
Yeah, who will look at? All right, did you have a timeframe, when they like, back when you about, you know, did we think?
Well, if I was the last one, he promised that he would let us know if it's impossible. And I do feel like that he is committed, um, to, to our concerns, and that he will help as much as he can. Um, he said he would personally speak with someone from D E P that could maybe give us an answer. And also, while, while I'm management area representative, because there would be a partnership with, with that leg of F D C as well, if we were to enter into a partnership for Hagan Post. So, if he, he did assure me, and I had a cell number.
But there is four programs you could get over Canada right now without any dredge. Four, four small, four small, yeah. If we want to take on the operation, four more. Which is another thing, you could...
Well, it's a wait and see right now.
Wait and see right now.
I would rather, let's just wait and hear back from him, and he does some data, and I'll see the board.
And last, certainly, we have not started spraying mosquitoes yet, um...
About fifty degrees out there, is it?
Right, especially not last night, or tonight. So, we're just waiting to see what happens with these temperatures. Uh, I know there has been some activity, um, but it seems to be, you know, pretty towards there. And I don't think the mosquitoes are flying as far, but I know there is some few activities. And we're still waiting to see, um, but we're, we're poised and ready to go.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm thirty-two, comments and concerns. Can you put that between seats, so they can, like, motion, second, and third, and just to the construction and to the option?
Thank you, yes.
So, is there a motion to reappoint, uh, Wayne Patchett and Dale Roberts?
Motion, second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Moody, second, from, uh, Commissioner Page, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Anybody? Article seventy-two, comments and concerns from the public from Long Island Island, okay? Want to hear us, we can speak on anything that wasn't on your agenda. Okay. And you're the law? Article seventy-three, more yet from National Idol, Commissioner Moody?
Uh, hm, oh, I, well, I looked, I took a picture of, uh, the highway down below the prison, this week, the sun's gonna want it. And, uh, the structure down there is killing the highway. But I talked to Mr. Thompson, and, uh, they aware of it. We took the video of the highway before they started. But we've got, I mean, but it's a no-brainer. The road's cracking all the way, and we won't go to the center line. Big track, stick your hand in it. Part of the road missing, a port of the road missing, a lot of places where they're working right now. And, uh, George Dick says, "They'll take care of it, they'll leave it." Uh, that's the word I got this week, from it. And they, they, they promised, put it back like it was, you know, we got that agreement with them in writing, so we just have to leave it. And, uh, I mean, it's just a, it's, I got a picture on the phone, I sent it to one of them, and, and they, they will, they, they agreed to take care of it. You know? And, uh, I had somebody, they'd heard about what we were gonna do, they had some spraying, and they think we're ready to say that out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's, that's my, mine, in my area, I talk about the police, that's it.
Commissioner Page?
I called, from Florida, from, uh, Lamar Madison, he has a house at the bridge, uh, next to me. He'd come down, want a spring break, he'd work, and... He'd come down on spring break, he works, and, but it's awful, George, he's off on spring break, he came down to his house at East Phoenix. And he said, I want to report to you, thank you for getting the roads repaired, great, uh, they, they straightened, fixed it, looks real nice. I said, don't be weak, uh, I said, see, if you can, if you can, you're gonna commit to Moody. When this is middle, I, I talked to F D C, so, so they're committing to Moody, but he was very thrilled. And I want to call my bridge, pardon, my brother's breaking from the highway and the river, still, still working on it, he's regular, he's, yeah. I remember red, he did, he did.
Okay. They, they promised me they would, if they could get to it, they would raise it.
Yeah.
And I ended up down on the site, they have red, what for?
No, well, he, he said it was great, look at, look at it. Uh, other than that, uh, things been going pretty good in my district, we got a lot of tracks on the roads, a lot of working on all that. And I'm glad to see, you know, can start to mow it, or try to pick up slack ones with, uh, with the, uh, house, move the water to the field. And nothing to, I don't really think, my wife keeps me abreast, and it's been complaints about tracks blowing out boats from the beach, you know, that much of. But, like everybody's coming, and the board has some difficult tasks. Head up, it's, uh, budget time, and I know you want to understand, right, Paul? But it's hard to be here, even, I'm sure. Second.
Thank you.
And that's Matt. Uh, off the, uh, Warner River, Winikuski, and, uh, Latin Holloway River, board met last, uh, there is a, great David, and that's who about Madison and, um, neighbors of Gollum to Georgia, supposed to meet over there, or met with the gentleman and some cabinet members over there, let's play today. We're supposed to meet with them one day next week, I think it is, uh, that's, this is May, April, I think in April. And Gollum to Georgia, and top of City Council, yeah. So, don't know what he gonna do over there, but they got this legislature in front of me. Madison Air, they represent the Madison Air, and the South Georgia, they're talking together. And since a month or so, they told us, you know, these people always did collaboration, tried, had nothing, they had war on somebody else. So that could be some direct action coming on on that. Another color I got is about the five eight five hot pass, or the toll road coming in front of me to Washington, all the way to the Georgia line. I had one person that tell me that they'll send a resolution, tell them we don't want that toll road, that's going, impact, capable, kind of, kind of way, I don't know, I don't know what's gonna impact this forest, the highway, so they said it's gonna bring about twenty-five thousand folks, and but some people said that was too much work right now, anyway. I told them, I'll mention it to county missions, and it was in their preparation, they were like, you don't know what happened to it.
You know, that's where the Senate, everyone of those committees, it's free, you know, they're moving, and, and talking.
Will you say it happened to it?
All the Senate, all those committees have approved it, and the Senate, the government behind it, and legislature behind it.
Okay, well, I thought he brought it up here. They have the road down on the ground, it's, it's called mixing roads, and these crazy, and I think that's kind of, um, it's a market district. And they say that, they need some spread out there to, to, yeah. That did, I, I, I appreciate y'all, appreciate the help, if we try to go and do what's right by our duty, we can continue to do that. I appreciate the, uh, um, military alumni board members, looks like they're trying to work together, get something done, there's a, a. Colin Vincent is by that, this partner, I don't know how many, he's gotta call, I've talked to him, and John Keener, I hardly remember his name. I didn't write himself a new special report, and somewhere down at him. And he said, I was calling, uh, the U S commissioner, the daughter, how it feels about the public, tell them, I just, just, uh, about that toll road that's coming through the county. And I said, well, I sent it coming through our county, and what I've heard is, is kind of a mixed bag. Some people have told me they really were excited about it, I personally would love to see it come through the county. It'd be great if economic development.
We missed out on interstate, that's what I heard.
Pardon?
We missed out on interstate, I won't have to remember that.
Oh, yeah, we missed out, we don't wanna miss out, you know, but I, I told him, I said, that are awesome, but it would be very happy if we could have came and spent around that county, I know anybody else in here, yeah.
But you did, you know, but you did, you said Kevin, so I know, he said, he was there with all the nearby, they just wanted.
Did we go along?
Well, I did, I made the wall, keep them out. Now, anyway, I, I mean, that was a question, he didn't want to, to, to tell them what the public sentiment was, and I took the, easy road out, it's big. There's some far and some again, so I just, that's, um, you could.
No, I think, but I'll, I'll say, if you look at the driving, the project, it's probably gonna happen.
Probably is, and I, I, you know, and there's some people, we talked a little bit about vision twenty-sixty. And it's a border through, and I said, you know, that was done under prior ownership with this property. And it's a thing, you come, come on up through here, you gotta go across somebody's property. And he said, well, you're probably gonna make a billionaire out of somebody, I said, I think the owner of the robbery is already a billionaire. He said, I can't see that.
But if it's toll road money from back off there.
Well, it might, it might be an interchange there down there, we can get some, some, uh, business, you know, do something for tax bill.
It's gonna be a vision, toll road, we're probably end up back off there, then ever again.
Might get a little.
Tell me they have public here, all of you.
Do you got anything?
I do, um, when's the last time you wrote on the sometimes say Parkway and paid the toll, and it was just funky, it could be, we can pay that for a model. Thought I, but that's not what I have, what I have is, um, April the third, and fourth, we've got our hearing on, uh, Taylor County versus Brooks. Everybody's welcome to come if they want to, it can be in Jeff Parker's office, uh, uh, the grand jury, um.
Sometimes.
That's called the nine o'clock.
Oh, wait a second?
Yes.
I don't know if you're there, you know, will the gentleman be there, this, he's starting to call?
I don't see.
I wanna see what he looks like.
Do we need to add a conference, that, that may be one of the one, the present, uh, commissioner there?
There'll be all the attendants in the conference, I don't know if you need to add the.
We have time, we're gonna ride to him.
Um, your clerk's gonna testify for us.
I'm going to, I'm not that.
Yes, you are, you got, you know, you gotta be there.
We have to run to her. I just tried, I'm gonna call you. Don't do that, if he go, I got, I really have a clock already, but I can't even get to those.
I, I'd like to, it, it's an all possible, I'm like.
I think I'll reschedule and just try to tell up to, I don't look that right.
I think we all want to be there.
I'm better than that.
Been going on one time, and.
Get what we do it with.
I'm, I'm gonna bring it up again.
I'm, I'm gonna reschedule, I'm gonna get you any.
I'm gonna work it on that.
That's all I have.
I'm gonna worry about it.
Uh, that's all I had, uh, three days, I'm, I'm leaving, okay?
Three days.
Y'all got anything? Okay, anyone, you got anything else? Okay, well, I'm not gonna start, it's out, 'cause I have a beautiful, my new friend on the road.
Oh, I know, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Her name is Sadie Rose, Sadie Rose Spiegel, and, uh, she's the most beautiful baby I've ever seen in my life, and I've stood there about the last four.
Yeah, here for you, sure.
Oh, my goodness, but, you know, uh, that baby, I guess any baby could bring new life to the family. You know, everybody just somehow, and, and, you know, it just, that's up to, to the family. Um, and I want to, I say thank you to the staff, um, for all the work that y'all do, and I, I do appreciate the fact that you've done, put a lot into, uh, youth department, and, uh, I want to thank the board for making our decisions, for their effort, for, uh, being together, working together. And what you all, I want to thank the public for coming and being with us, thank you to the sheriff's department and youth community. And that's all I've got. Is there a motion or a adjournment?
All right, no adjournment, thanks.
Second, all in favor to say aye? That's, that's going on.